I'd like to call this meeting together. Welcome one and all to the September 12th edition of the Trinity County Planning Commission. First item would be any public comment. Any member of the public may address the Planning Commission on any agenda matter not listed on the agenda. That is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. And we'd like to hold these two, three minutes. Is there anyone who would like to address the commission?
Good evening, Commission. Justin Hawkins from A-Port. Yesterday, we had a workshop in here, and I don't think I saw all of you, so maybe I could give you a little bit of just an update. Because I think I learned a couple of things at least. A lot of it was kind of the standard run-through on CEQA. I know we've talked about it a lot, but I guess what I'm here to do today is to continue to exhaust our administrative remedies to deal with the way the draft EIR came in. The basic problem we're having right now is that members of the public are being forced to develop substantial evidence based on expert opinion to counter what's being said in the draft. It takes time, it takes money. And the group that I have part of, we already did that for the whole trip comment period, and we weren't able to get very far. But we're serious about trying to provide evidence that's substantial from experts that backs up what we think is actual reality on the ground. It takes a lot of time, and we're willing to continue to do that. But I think it's fair to let you guys know that's what basically CEQA counsel said last night, that to let you guys know that we're working on it. That way, if the county proceeds out of the path they're going right now, then it's going to come before you, and it's, I mean, it's a mess. Some people would say, I guess the technical term from last night is called fundamentally flawed. It's fundamentally flawed. It's fundamentally flawed in the objectives, alternatives, mitigations, I mean, so many areas that I can't go into right now. But I think it's important that the commission knows that it's really flawed, fundamentally flawed, and that if it gets passed to you on the current path, do the right thing and send it back. You got to. Because otherwise, there's no CEQA police, right? So we have to deal with it ourselves. We don't want to do that. That's going to waste everybody's time. But that's the message that's being relayed to us right now, is that they're going forward with the way it is. So I guess what I kind of, I mean, the kind of, I guess what I'm expecting is that they're going to expect a little bit of like CEQA alchemy from you guys. It can bring in garbage, and you guys will develop a make-it-work program and have gold come out. I think it's a lot to ask from it. And it's really, that's what it is. A lot of people, I've heard a lot of times people say garbage in, garbage out. But I think planning, the lead agency, somehow thinks that we can do gold out of garbage. So I wish you guys luck. I think it's probably best to punt it back to them and tell them it needs a recirculation or rewrite. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comments, move on to the regular calendar. The first item is minutes of June 13, 2019. I think I was not at that meeting, so I will be abstaining on this vote.
There were only three of us present.
Are you ready?
Corrections?
I have no corrections.
Do you have any corrections?
No.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted. I will second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as presented. Any discussion of motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Abstained?
Aye.
Abstained?
I abstained.
Two abstentions. Okay. Moving on to item number two, which is a variance from a required 350-foot commercial cannabis setback. This is a request for an annual initial variance from the required 350-foot setback from a neighboring residential dwelling located at 961 Top of the Grade, Douglas City, APN 025-520-29, with a proposed CEQA determination of exempt. Applicant is Chi Tao. Pardon me if I mispronounce.
Can hello? The applicant tonight is Chi Tao. As you said, he's located on Top of the Grade, Douglas City. There are two different residences included in this variance. He has a representative with him tonight, Zhang Deng. And I changed the format a little bit just to make it a little bit more clear. And do you have any questions? Oh, we recommend approval with conditions.
So the letter from the adjacent neighbor says his APN is 530-34, but on the map with the comments, 530-34 says no comment, and 530-30 says comment in favor. Does that gentleman not know his APN number, or did staff make an error?
I could have made an error, but that, I know that that's his house on the map. So I know that this person lives in this house and made that comment.
And that's the number?
The numbers might not match us.
The number that's given in the staff report for the...
This is what I wrote, but I have a comment map to make sure I don't have it memorized. Is that correct? Do you want to take a look at it?
What are you guys trying to verify, sorry?
Just the APNs. I just wanted to make sure that it was Matt Hawkins that made that letter.
Yes.
Yeah. And he is to the north.
Yes.
Yeah. He had a typo in the letter, I'll say.
Perhaps. Yeah.
I just want to get the AP number that we're doing the variance.
Those are correct.
Two correct.
I see what you're saying.
If he's the one...
Thirty.
He says thirty-four.
Thirty-four.
He's the one who made the comment.
To be honest with the mapping software right now, I wouldn't be able to verify that. I can look it up on my phone.
Other than that, I have nothing else.
Commissioners, anybody else? Questions for staff?
You could maybe include in your motion to correct the APN if needed.
Actually, I don't see the APN of the subject property in the motion, in the staff recommendation.
I think the correction to the APN was from one of the properties subject to the alteration of distance.
Yeah.
Yeah, I see that. I'm sorry.
No other questions of staff?
I actually do have a question. I'm trying to make sure that I'm on the right... I have a question with the, with the conditions for our variance. It's, one of the conditions is that all the buildings must be permitted, but they're not in here. It says that there are structures existing on the property that are not in compliance. So structure, it says, under conditions of approval, number three, structures on the property shall be compliant with California Building Code. Under comment section, it says county assessor's office, no permits on record for 20 by 60 building, 10 by 20 storage building, or 10 by 20 processing building. And they have a building permit for a mobile home that hasn't been put on the parcel yet. So my question would be, can we grant a variance that's, if we grant the variance, subject to these conditions, they still will not have a variance until they brought those buildings up to code, or?
Well, it is contingent on condition.
So...
So yes. Correct?
Uh huh.
Yes. The applicant has been making progress.
Okay, well, my main concern was, we're not granting a variance to that code compliance.
Actually, the staff response to that comment is that they're required to demolish or permit all unpermitted structures.
Yeah. Right. That's...
And I've been on site twice before this to make sure that they're making progress.
Yeah.
Developmental.
Any other comments or questions?
Are you also welcome to ask the applicant or the applicant's person?
Okay, this is a public hearing. I would like to open this up for any comments from the public on this specific item. First, I would offer the opportunity to the applicant, if you would like to speak first.
I'm Douglas City, but I cannot speak English very well, maybe you can translate for me.
Good morning. Well, good evening, Commissioner Zao. My name is Zhang Deng, Douglas City, and the neighbor's for Chi Tao, so I'll be translating for him.
He's very grateful tonight that his variance is actually being brought up to be heard. He's hoping that you guys grant him the variance because he's worked very hard to get to where he's at now. He's had a lot of different departments, Fish and Wildlife, as well as some engineers on his property, to get to him to where he is at now, as well as a biologist and archaeologist too as well, to make sure that he's not disturbing any other, you know, any artifacts or anything like that onto the property. And then as for permits, he's got quite a few permits in as well, and then some of the buildings have been demolished as well, so. He's very excited to be here tonight, and he wants to say thank you again.
Any questions of the applicant? Thank you. Okay, anyone else like speaking? Yes, we'll do the three-minute limit.
Good evening, Justin Hawkins from A-Port. I had the chance to visit the site once, and I think that, I think that by taking the time to get the permit and go through the process correctly is actually restoring the property and improving the property. And I think it's an example of how our program can actually enhance the neighborhood and bring people into compliance and make things better, because all the rules are so. There's a lot of rules you got to follow now. Beyond that, just approving the variance is going to allow him the economic ability to actually make those improvements and continue to, I mean, if it's going to be replacing these things, that's going to add to the economic base of the property value, right? So I think that granting the variance is pretty much a no-brainer. The neighbor says so too. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the commission. Commissioners, your thoughts? Or staff? Any follow-up comments on what you heard? Okay. Commissioners?
I just basically have a question. What number are we going, what APN number are we going to be using to make a, to make the motion?
Well, I don't have APNs in my head, so I will have...
Commissioner, are you asking about the APN getting the variance, or?
No, the APN that, that the setback is reduced from.
Okay, sir.
So you're asking about the neighboring property?
Yes.
So I'll look at the property. Thirty-four, that Hawkins is thirty-four.
Okay, so it's 53034?
Correct.
Okay. The other one is 53036?
Yeah, we'll go 36.
Thirty-six?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, then I would like to go ahead and move that we approve the commercial cannabis variance application CCV-2019-004 to reduce the cultivation site setback in Trinity County Code 17.43.050A.8 from 350 feet to 210 feet from the residence located on APN 025-530-34-00 and 325 feet from the residence located on 025-530-36-00, subject to the findings and conditions as stated in the staff report.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion of this motion? And then by voice, if all of those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Item is approved. We move on to item number three, which is, let's see, yeah. Request for an annual initial variance from the required 350-foot cannabis cultivation setback from neighboring residential dwelling located at 1531 Mann River Road in Mann River, APN 018050-67, with a proposed CEQA determination. App applicant.
Yihalova? Yihalova?
Yihalova.
Yihalova.
I beg your pardon.
Yihalova.
Staff?
The applicant is here tonight, and her consultant, or, yeah, no, I haven't seen her in a while, sorry.
No, actually, I have a first cousin.
Okay, got it, sorry. Her consultant mentioned she's here as well. And this property is located on the lower Mann River Road. They're asking for a variance from their next-door neighbor, and, which is just one house. And we recommend approval with conditions.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions of staff?
The number, handwritten number by the neighbor's residence, attachment two, that's building permit 2004-238, is that correct? Just curious.
I wrote that.
That's what, no, you were just indicating that the neighbor's residence is permitted.
Seeing none, we will open this to public comment. This is a hearing. Anyone wishing to comment on this application, please step forward. We'll start with the applicant or agent.
Good evening. My name is Sebastian Ronoff. I've been consulting Natalia to make this property fully compliant. She's not here today because of personal reasons, but I can attest that property is fully compliant with water board, Fish and Wildlife, and we're still working with county planning and building department to make it compliant with local ordinances. And I think it would be in the best interest of community to approve this variance.
Any questions of the applicant?
Agent? Thank you, sir.
Seeing none, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the commission. Commissioners?
Staff, any follow-up? No. Sorry.
I do have one question, just when code compliance said the parcel is large enough to relocate, but in the site, does it permit to grant it? Allow it? Has there been a site?
Yeah.
And what did you determine?
That it's, I responded.
Okay, okay. I saw that, but I wasn't sure if that was just...
Yeah, there is steep terrain, it would require...
All right. I wanted to make sure that, that's the same comment that you put in the staff report, so I wanted to make sure that that was actually your answer, or not just...
Oh, Bell is definitely in the other place.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other kind of question? Motion? Any?
I will make a motion. I'll make a motion to percol cultivation, commercial cultivation variance application CCV 2019-033 to reduce the cultivation site setback in Trinity County Code 17.43.050A.8 from 350 to 150 feet from the residence located at APN 018-050-68, subject to the condition findings and conditions of approval stated in the staff report. You're in.
I'll second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? We'll do by voice vote. All of those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item is approved. Staff, looks like item number four has been withdrawn.
Is that correct?
Thank you.
Because the comment that the variance is not necessary.
We need better. Then we will move on to item number five, which is a variance request. So we have a variance, request for annual initial variance from the required 350-foot cannabis cultivation setback from a neighboring residential dwelling located at 1720 Brady Road in A-Port, APN 011-410-19, with a proposed CEQA determination of exempt. Any applicant?
Fang Yang is here tonight. Any questions that I cannot? There's only, it's a floral platform. It's located on Brady Road in A-Port, asking for variance from two neighbors. And we're recommending approval with conditions.
Okay, seeing none, this is a public hearing. We'll open public hearing. As I say, if anyone wishing to speak to this item, please step forward. The applicant, if you'd like.
Hi, I'm applicant Fang Yang. I just want you to know that I've been compliant since we were allowed to be compliant, but due to my previous consulting firm, they sold it to a new firm, and they lost my paperwork. That's why this is being renewed, or like a new one, but it should have been renewed, but they lost my paperwork.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Wish to comment? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Staff, any... Commissioners?
Comments, thoughts, questions, or motions?
I move that we approve the commercial cannabis variance application CCV-2019-033 to reduce the cultivation site setback in Trinity County Code 17.43.050A.8 from 350 feet to 190 feet from the residence located on APN 011-410-17-00 and 330 feet from the residence located on APN 011-410-18-00, subject to the findings of fact and conditions as stated in the staff report.
I will second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any comments, questions, or discussion of the vote? Hearing none, we'll call for a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. It is approved. Okay, item number six. This is for a determination of similar use. Request is to determine a similar use for a health campus in the Trinity Alps Business Park Special Unit Development, zoning district located at Art 81 Arbuckle Court in Leaverville, APN 024-220-83. Proposed CEQA determination is not applicable, and the applicant is Trinity County Planning Department. Planner Hunter.
Yes, this is a similar use determination. Just want to confirm, okay, what's done is not worked. The staff and the property owner want to confirm that a health campus or medical clinic, medical facilities is similar use to the offices listed. The SUD is split up into several sections. You have the development standards in your staff report. There's an upper level and a lower level. This property is located on the upper level, and that upper level with several uses are permitted, one being offices. Also, the SUD does have a threshold, any structure with a floor area that exceeds 20,000 square feet would automatically trigger a use permit. So taking that into account, it's staff's recommendation that healthcare, or a health campus, medical clinic, medical offices, as long as they do not exceed the 20,000 square foot threshold for floor area, could be permitted by law. And that is the matter. foot threshold for floor area, could be permitted by law, and that is the matter. There is a proposal for, that it will be coming forth for the health campus. However, at this point, this is a determination for the entire SUD. It's not specific to the project, although we do have folks in the audience that are here to speak to the proposal. But this has been initiated by the planning department and not the applicant or property owner, or I guess not an applicant at this time, but the property owner. So just, this is similar uses for, for the use of the SUD. Again, similar use as an office, as long as it doesn't exceed 20,000 square feet floor area and trigger a use permit.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, questions of staff?
I have one question myself then. I see on the upper level, uses without a use permit includes hotel, motel, restaurant, with or without drive-through, and my concern is traffic. It would seem the traffic is, would be comparable to restaurants and motels and other retail stuff items listed there. Did you, did anything about the traffic imposed on that cul-de-sac come to mind, or did you reach that conclusion? That's the same.
Traffic is a concern, it would be a concern, it's, yeah, at that point. Again, based on the floor area, with similar uses to those that are permitted, that are uses permitted without a use permit, again, it seems similar to those uses without a use permit. But yes, traffic obviously with any of these uses is going to be a concern, and these are permitted without a use permit.
Okay, fair enough. Do you want to comment your questions for staff?
Well, that's, that's the question. It says, you know, generates no more traffic, burden, dust or noise, if it's going to be similar. Not sure...
And that's why we're here.
How we can really make that determination. I mean, I guess you could say a hotel with 40 units, if all of them were full, that would be 40 vehicles. I'm guessing that a clinic would generate, a health campus would generate a lot more than trips per day. So, and of these other ones here, many of them would have relatively little traffic.
Okay.
So I guess that's my concern, is that how do we address that without having some estimate of average daily trips or some indication? But certainly my first way I look at it would be, it probably is more traffic than most of these uses. That's my concern, is it? How we determine similar use?
Now, in the uses permitted, subject to the use permit, that includes, of course, anything that exceeds 20,000 square feet in size. Building materials supply, indoor/outdoor cabinet manufacturing, hotel motel exceeding 41 units or more, low intensity manufacturing, supply wood products. The performing arts center, I think, is, is the, at times could be high traffic, but obviously not on a consistent basis that a health campus would be. So, yeah, if, if there is a concern about traffic, and I do believe that it's a valid concern, then it is up to the discretion of the planning commission to require a use permit or even a director's use permit, so at least the traffic impacts are analyzed.
Okay. Any other comments before public comment? Okay, I'd like to open this up for public comment. Anybody who'd like to comment on this item brought to us by the planning department, please step forward. If you care, identify yourself. If you care too, please step forward.
Hi, good evening. My name is Glenn Hayward, I'm the executive director of health services for the Redding Archery. Thank you for seeing us tonight and reviewing our application. Yes, we are building and would like to build this campus. It's a little over 18,000 square feet, but we have been leasing a building and off Highway three, about 6,000 square feet now, for a couple of years, we've completely outgrown that building. We're currently turning away probably 10 to 15 patients a day, trying to get into our services, so we felt that it's time to build a bigger campus, to improve the overall healthcare of the community, improve the access to care in our community.
Could you characterize the amount of traffic you have at your current facility?
Right now, we have two providers at our facility. They average between 18 to 20 patients per day, and then we have physical therapists that see and probably 6 to 8 patients a day. So around 50 patients a day, they work 10-hour shifts, 4 to 5 cars an hour.
And what's your expectation, blue skying at what your 18,000 per foot facility might be?
Blue sky, if we are fully staffed, we'll be able to run four medical providers plus physical therapy plus behavioral health. You would probably have 110 patients a day.
Okay. Do you have busy hours?
Busy hours typically, like most doctors, obviously the first, you know, the morning about 8 till about 11, dies off in the afternoon, picks up right again after lunch, and then dies off around 4 o'clock in the afternoon. Our providers don't schedule patients after 5, so there's no patients coming in after 5 o'clock. That's their time to chart, so after 5 o'clock, there would be no more patients arriving.
Okay.
And what time do you open in the morning?
We open at 7:00 AM.
Okay, so it'll be early.
Staff gets their set, and we start patient here at 8. So staff arrives, gets ready for the day, patients start arriving by 8.
Okay, any other questions of this gentleman? Thank you, sir. Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Commissioner Justin Hawkins from Heford. I spend a fair amount of time, especially lately, over at the performing arts center, and a lot of the traffic, I mean, that parking lot gets full big time. But a lot of it's actually sort of sounds like after their business hours or on the weekend. And I think it's, I mean, to me, I look at the upper level uses without a permit, and some of these places have been, have a lot more traffic. The restaurants in particular, even retail sales can, there's a welding and manufacturing shops, I mean, there's so many other things in here, and knowing the parcel and knowing the community, where else are you going to go, really? I think it's a great spot. I don't, I, I think that you should approve this with, as a permitted use without the need for a use permit. That would be my recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you.
General Darrell from Junction City, and I agree with the previous speaker. To put that property to use as medical services is possibly the highest use we could get out of it in this community. Very similar use to those other principally permitted uses, and I also approve the easing of this permanent process and approval tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. What else? Okay, we'll close public comment, as I say.
Sir Chairman, may I speak?
Please, please.
I did, going through the development standards of the SUD, they're developed, they're titled, okay. If you look at, what is, page six in the staff report or page three of the standards, item M, there is a discussion that projects generating a high ADT may require traffic analysis and off-site improvements prior to approval.
This would be required at the discretion of the project due by the DOT. Is that something?
There's a little ambiguity there, but there is language.
Used to be the Department of Transportation of planning.
Yes, well, yes, it used to be, yes. But still, the, the Department of Transportation would, would be obviously looking at this project. The problem is, ambiguity is generally, an off-site improvement is leveraged by a land use entitlement. So that is a little bit of heartburn over that language, but that is noted in the development standards.
It would be weighted into at the time of the encroachment permit.
It could be, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, any thoughts, comments?
Discussion. Looking at some, some of the users listed, I don't think that you would get way more traffic from a, from a medical facility than a restaurant with a traffic service. Depending on the restaurant, the time, it's like, put it in and out, there's 200 cars in line every time you go by the place. So then you could get way more traffic from a restaurant or from retail sales than the even community college. This staff report, the community college, technical schools, there's a lot of, I don't see traffic as an issue when, when put against a lot of these. I would say that it is similar use.
I, I agree, especially when I saw the restaurant with, with drive-through. It seems like it's perfectly appropriate.
Okay. Gentlemen, comments, thoughts?
I'm equally encouraged by the similarity of use and, and the fact that a traffic analysis is required due to development standards is also encouraging that that will be analyzed and mitigated accordingly if necessary.
Okay. I, I would encourage, I would encourage. Any more care to make a motion anywhere you'd like?
I will make a motion. Make a motion to adopt resolution PC 2019-02, finding the following, health campuses and medical clinics' uses are similar to the permitted offices' uses in the Trinity Alps Business Park SUD zoning district, and shall be permitted without a conditional use permit in the upper level. And the health campus and medical clinics' uses that exceed 20,000 square feet in size are required to obtain a conditional use permit from the planning commission.
I'll second.
Okay, and having duly read said resolution, I see no recommended changes. So we have a motion to approve it as presented. And second, any discussion about this one? Yeah, let's do a roll call on this, so that we'll have a chat. We'll have a chat about that at the bylaw session. Please do a roll call.
Commissioner Horn.
Aye.
Stuart.
Aye.
Matthews.
Aye.
Ranger.
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So directed. I'll catch you at the end of it. Don't let me get away. Item number six. Item number seven is a parcel map extension of time. This is a request for us to approve a second one-year extension of time for approved tentative subdivision map. Approval of this map in October of 2012 was granted for the creation of three parcels, approximately 40 acres each. Project is located on Van Duzen Road, 620 miles south of the intersection with Highway 36 at Scott Flay and Man River, APN 018-210-16. Proposed secret determination is not, applicant Stephen and Susan Adams.
Thank you. Before we jump into the staff report, there are two corrections. The first is, this would be the third extension. There's one granted in 2017 and one granted in 2018. The subdivision map act allows for six years of extensions to be granted by the county of city approving the map. The second correction is, please disregard the alternatives portion of the staff report. That is a carryover from, that was more likely.
That looks like where?
That was, was, yeah. So yes, this, this, the map is getting very close to being completed, and these folks have been working really hard to get these improvements in. There are still some questions, and going through the final certification, if you would, regarding the map. This is an approved map, so an extension of time request is just a yea or a nay, so to speak. You're not adding conditions adjusting, it's, it's somewhat ministerial in nature where the map is approved, it's just an extension. Oftentimes, in previous jurisdiction, folks would come in with a map, they'd ask for a three-year chunk of time. This one's been a little bit more incremental, but they are getting close, they had hoped to finish up, but there's a little more work on, needed on the file to make sure all the conditions and improvements are where they need to be. So we're close, we just need a little bit more time, plus the request for an extension of 12 months. Also, you received a memo, there's a lot of information in that memo that came out this afternoon, yes. And adding a little bit of background, the applicant originally contacted me hoping for a modification regarding the road standards and conditions of the road. This is a, it's a complicated matter, I need a little more time to look into that and to work with Cal Fire. We did have a meeting set up with them to talk about this, and then, well, it's fire season, and they will, we had to postpone that meeting. So progress is being made, it's just the expiration date of the map is quickly approaching, and this is something I don't want to take a chance with. Huge investment, huge commitment with the property owners, and we want to keep it going. So we want to err on the side of caution and request an extension of time for 12 months in full confidence that it will be wrapped up before that time. Any questions?
For the third time.
For the third time, not the second.
Sure, you don't want to answer 24. Okay. Okay. Well, I haven't had a chance to read the memo, so that's, just that is, that's need for a future meeting if it were to come to us.
It is. If it does come to the point and, and the findings can be made for modification, and it's appropriate for modification, then that would come back to the planning commission.
Okay, so tonight, we're just looking at this extension, time extension.
Yes.
Commissioners, any questions for staff or any comments?
I do have a question for staff. So just to be clear, because the modification request states that there is no possibility for another extension. So the standard is 24 months, this would be the third year, so that's five years. So is there, in fact, are you 24 months allowed?
That's a very good question. Yes, our subdivision ordinance is, is a bit outdated, and so in this case, we're looking to state law subdivision map act, which allows for six years, maximum of six years. So... So that's defaulting to state law. And so when that was written, that was going by the local subdivision ordinance, and having experienced many map extensions in another jurisdiction, I knew it could be longer. And so that offered also another option other than just a modification option. It gave us more time.
One more question, if I may, Mr. Chair. So would it be prudent for, and is it possible for the commission to consider a 24-month extension? Just in case, I mean, based on the modification request, it seems like there's been a lot of setbacks to this project, not to mention the ongoing road construction going on Highway 36 that, I mean, further delays, a lot of, you know, adds constraints to the project. Is that possible? Is that something we can consider?
Absolutely, absolutely. As I said, we all hope to wrap this up sooner, but things do happen. So that would be, should something happen, help us avoid having to come back next year if that should be the case.
Thank you. I'm a little confused because it doesn't really call out what the special legislative extension is that was related to the recession. Because this was originally approved in 2012.
Correct.
So it's been seven years already.
Right.
And the normal timeframe, it says, is 24 months plus a single extension. So even if there was a six, six years allowed, seems like we're already over that unless this special legislative. And it doesn't say when that.
No, that gets, yeah, that gets very, very complicated, and I didn't measure it out, but there were several legislative actions that were taken that were, were just, they were through state law. They were automatic. So that just added that time on to the map. It's, it was, there's several maps out there that had that benefit. And so, no, we are, we are fine with that.
But this issue that Commissioner Horne just brought up regarding 24 months versus 12 months. I mean, I'm a little concerned about setting a precedent if that's not really our purview. I don't know. I mean, it says 12 months.
I do believe there are representatives here that could also.
Well, it's not really their call.
No.
It's either subdivision map act or treaty kind of code or state law that specifies what those timeframes are and the extensions you can have.
The issue of this special legislative act, that was state law essentially overrode all of the local law. The intent of that was during the recession, there were maps which were approved but couldn't be acted on. I don't know the exact link, but essentially, that was a tolling agreement with the state for those who had active maps after the recession. So ultimately, from my understanding of this, of this area, you would be looking at the date of approval. There would be some period of tolling based on those legislative acts. Those have now been lifted, so that tolling period would be subtracted from your total six years. So I think that's, I don't have that number for you, but if you wanted to verify the 24 months, I think the planning department is convinced that 12 months is enough, and you're entitled to that. Based on this tolling, you may be entitled to the 24 months. I really can't answer that, but it's definitely something that you could conditionally approve 12 months with a 24-month approval if staff can verify the 24 months if it's in that fit.
Any other comments, questions, clarifications? I think we'll open this up for any public comment. Would anyone care to address the commission on this item?
My name's Cameron Holmgren. I'm partners with Steve and Susan Adams. This subdivision, we've been pushing hard, like it says on the letter. We're ready to do whatever it takes here in the next year. We were really anticipating in spring that we would be able to get through everything and have this be ready to be approved at this time. And like all the reasons you were saying, need a little bit more time so the planning department can wrap their cells around everything that's been on here. You're just new to the area or to the job. So we're ready to do whatever it takes to push this forward in a year. We really, we lose a lot of sleep over this. It's been a long time, and two years, if that's what, you know, if you can offer two years, we'd rather just get it done in six months, but I feel like a year, we can push through it. And then two years would be extra, but I'd rather, you know, we've been pushing hard all summer. If we keep, you know, whatever it takes, money financially, we can get through this in the next year. So we'd really appreciate an extension.
Any questions? Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening. Commissioner Justin Hawkins from Haverford. You know, I've hired AM Baird Engineering for, they're the contractor on this, out of Fortuna. So I have no doubt that they've been affected by the construction, even dealing with getting through the disrepair construction. It's literally blocked off for most of the day. You get a one-hour time window between 12 and 1:00. You can get through it, but otherwise, it's completely blocked off. It's got to be, I mean, they were, I was expensive to get in the survey, I'm like, I'm not going to lie. But they do great work, but, you know, the distance to get anywhere in the county, I can see how this could take forever, especially with the standards nowadays and just trying to get everybody out there, contractors and stuff. So if you can and you feel comfortable, give them 24 months and just allow, like, let this never be an issue for the commission to deal with again. I think it'd be a good idea. Thank you.
Joe Grover from Junction City also, I'd say give 24 months, especially since they've been extra sensitive to doing sensitive road work in the wet season, and they are trying to comply with additional road requirements, the armoring of Culver, increasing the culvert size, things like that. It makes sense to give them the flexibility to do that in the right time of year. So I encourage approval of a 24-month extension.
Leslie?
No, not this evening.
All right, I think that's the public hearing. We'll close the public comment period. Well, commissioners.
I have concerns, even though they seem convinced that they can get it done in 12 months, but we're coming up with winter. And with the conditions of the, of Highway 36, it's not going to be improved by the winter. I think an extension certainly is warranted, but I would prefer to see it with the additional 12 months added if staff can verify that the additional time is allowable.
Sounds like a motion.
I guess it does. I could make it one.
You just have to include the resolution number.
I, I move that the Planning Commission adopts Resolution PC-2019-04, extending the life of the map for an additional 12 months with a new expiration date of October 11, 2020, with an additional 12 months allowed if the staff can verify that the additional time is in fact allowable.
I have a question on your motion. The resolution in the packet is dash 03, and what you said is dash 04.
And we just approved 02, so this.
Resolution 03.
Question 03.
Okay, can I amend my motion to read? Resolution PC-2019-03?
Thank you.
I have a little second.
Okay, so you are, to be clear, that your motion is recommending adopting a resolution for a 12-month extension and 24 if staff.
If staff can verify that the additional time is allowable.
Okay. And so there'll be a new expiration date of October 11, either 2020 or 2021?
Exactly.
Okay. And that's what you said. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution as modified with 12, 24 consideration. And in second, do we have any comments on the motion? Okay, can we get a roll call on this, please?
Commissioner Stewart?
Aye.
Rager?
Aye.
Horne?
Aye.
Matthews?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So that one goes on to staff. Well, that brings us to my figure. Amendment to the Plan Commission Procedures. Amendments are proposed to the Plan Commission Procedures or quote bylaws, which were last updated in 1989 by Resolution PC 8905. Proposed amendments to the bylaws include provisions to allow the chair or vice chair in the absence of the chair to cancel meetings when it is determined that a majority of planning commissions will not be obtained for a meeting or if there are no agenda items for consideration. Planning, Kay, Hunter. Director.
Thank you. So this item is just putting something before you in the way of some draft bylaws for you to consider, rip apart, put back together, do modify, as you see fit. These are your bylaws. I hope you do see a contrast, though, between the 1989 bylaws and what's drafted as something to consider.
There's a lot more words.
Lot more words, yes. And there's a different statutory environment as well from 1989. So again, we'll go through these, but they're for your consideration, and if there are items of doubt, whatever needs to be done. But this is just to start the discussion and to start to get some progress made towards finalizing. I will say, I do expect this to take a few meetings. I think that I do expect for a resolution to be approved tonight. So, you know, they can always be changed, and they should be updated more often than when was 1989, how many years ago? So timely, appropriate. So actually, Chair, if you'd like to.
Well, the, one question before I encourage the other commissioners. Can you give us the highlight?
The highlight, absolutely.
What's in the title of the item was that the chair can cancel a meeting when we don't need to have a meeting. That can't be the highlight. So what are the one or two or three biggies in here that you think really ought to address in our bylaws?
Well, we'll start, we'll start and just go through real quick. There are, in state law, what you call a special meeting, there are provisions for that. This is recognized, those, you know, government code sections, et cetera, you know, guidelines for setting special meetings, adjourning meetings, et cetera, in Rule 1. Election to officers has nothing to do with Rule 2. Duties of officers. We have a little bit more.
Do you want feedback as you go, or do you want to? Because you're not highlighting, you're just going through.
I'm not, I am going through.
You want to.
Okay, let's.
We can do it that way. So Commissioners, is there any upfront comments before we just go through it, rule by rule?
And.
Okay, well, why don't you continue? Rule 2, then, go back to that before you move on.
Okay, Rule 2.
We don't do it that way now. The board of supervisors doesn't do it that way, and I'm curious why we'd be switching to an election instead of a rotation. In fact, the board was shocked at their January meeting to find out they do it on rotation in our elections. But that's under governance, maybe. Unless they changed it, they didn't change it. So they do it on rotation.
Yeah, good to know. Consistency is good. If the board, if the board does it that way, then we would like to keep it that way.
Commissioners, I kind of like the rotation because every district is represented eventually.
I agree. Rotation is the way it should be.
Instead of us electing Graham every time, you know? Okay, so I'd suggest we leave a rotation or spell out what the rotation looks like or something.
Well, that was a question. Does this supersede the previous procedures?
Yes.
Because that was, the rotation was in the previous.
It was, yes. We'd be continuing as it is.
So we need to add that in. We can't just reference the previous one because we're superseding those.
We take that language and plunked it back in, and I'll bring you back a draft once we get this one out. Put back together.
Okay. Rule 3?
Duties of officers is Rule 3. Most of this discussion is just the powers of the chair. And then, you know, the protocol when there is relinquishment on an item. So there's the duties of officers.
Any comments on Rule 3?
Yes, I do have a comment. I'm curious, it says the second, third sentence. The chair may, at the discretion of the commission, shall appoint all committees of the commission necessary and convenient to conduct the commission's business. Now, does this mean that, like, for example, the subdivision committee will be reinstated? Or is that something to consider?
The subdivision committee has always been done on rotation as well.
This language be more like a subcommittee on a certain topic, possibly?
The class K subcommittee.
Exercise your authority.
Near and dear your heart. So that's the kind of thing to talk about, to go off and research a subject. Kim is up at here. But you think that's getting it?
Yeah.
If it's convenient for the conduct of the planning commission's business, yes.
Okay, I agree. Okay, any other comments on Rule 3? Come on, you highlighted it.
I think that the way we actually do this, this last line, while the chair is absent from a commission meeting or if the chair relinquishes the chair, the vice chair, the vice chair is the second in rotation. If both the chair and the vice chair are not here, then the next in rotation would be the person who would, who would be acting chair, and that should be referenced.
That's a good catch. Because then you still have quorum again.
Exactly. Yes.
Chair would be.
Yeah, and there are cases when you have the chair, and should there be a conflict of interest, they do have to recuse themselves and that would take, that's an example, when that would happen. Okay, they would go with rotation.
Yes.
The sentence before that about the chair may second any motions, is there an implication the chair can't make a motion?
No, the chair can make a motion. Typically, as a rule of order, the chair would make, so all other commissioners have had the opportunity to make a motion. It also doesn't prevent the chair from making a competing motion for members of the commission that made one.
Do you have a quick speaking of that?
So he's saying that the chair may make a motion and the chair may make a competing motion should there be a motion on the table. And so the wording here is curious about what the sentence adds.
It is curious. We can take it out.
Excellent idea. Commissioners, any other comments on Rule 3? Okay, let's move on.
Okay, agenda. There, I don't believe there's anything new in the agenda section. Please tell me if I'm wrong.
Well, I think the one thing that we've, I don't think we've ever done is I don't think the chair has ever directed an item to be placed on the agenda.
Well, that's not, we have the class K.
And other things that have come up in public comment, the chair has corrected the statute of agenda items in the future meeting.
Just to be clear, as an advisory board, it's not a legislative board, so you can direct, you can direct certain things within what's been placed before you to be heard, but not new items which haven't been directed by the board.
That's right, you have to ask the board if he could.
Yeah.
Okay.
And just a side note on that is we are getting materials together to do a planning commission, that from the commissioner. I don't, I was hoping to get on this agenda, didn't make it.
A what in?
A planning commission, just state law, rules of planning commission, workshop, so to speak, just discussion. So, that will be on the future agenda. Going over...
You know that we've all attended the class K talk.
Yeah. Yes, it is a refresher and discussion.
Is there, it says that the agenda will be posted. Is there anything to be stated about the items? The timing of the availability of items to the commission and to the public? Apparently, it's email comes out on Friday and stuff gets posted until the weekend or Monday?
That's all controlled by statute.
Okay, so...
Something that we could control in a bylaw.
Well, the statute places a minimum on it.
You could go with a longer period of time, but as far as the minimums, there's nothing within a bylaw that can change that.
It says the commission may change the order in which agenda items are considered. I think our practice has been that the chair can do that. Does the chair require the approval of the commission if there's changing the agenda? Or is it the time to speed ahead to answer? So, I guess that's a question. Is it the chair or the commission or does it matter?
It is a subject of vote.
And in some jurisdictions, it is, there's an item on the agenda to, you know, review the agenda before you like.
What our practice has been is that if there's a need, then the chair just changes the, changes it. That's been our practice.
Is that allowable?
So, yes.
Oh, absolutely.
As a rule of order, generally, the chair would announce his intent to move an item, generally state the reason why he intends to move it and see whether there's any major objection from the other commissioners. If there are, there can be a discussion. Generally, there's not. There are also typically unusual for a planning commission, but there are timed items. Timed items are one of those things that ultimately will change an agenda somewhat on its own. But that's also handled by the chair who will say that it's now time for a planned item or a timed item, at which point the chair would move to that item over some other item and move back to the agenda as it was regularly scheduled after the timed item. But just as decorum, typically, it's discussed.
Well, that's useful to know that we can actually have a timed item. I think that's an important thing that if we potentially advertise something controversial, we could say it's going to start at a certain time as opposed to making people wait for a long time. And obviously, usually, those things try to get moved up. If there's something controversial and a lot of people come for it, but not always. We've had people here for hours before waiting for an item to be aired that is still controversial. So, that's worth knowing.
And in general, if the commission is interested in an agenda review, those are also things that can usually be ferreted out between the, typically, agenda review would be the chair and staff. If you feel like something is a highly contested issue between the chair and staff, you can move that in the order prior to the agenda being posted so that you don't run into those sort of issues.
Also good to know. Rule 5, order of business. A, flag salute, B, roll call, C, public comments, D, approval minutes, agenda items, and adjournment.
Been here six years, we've never saluted the flag.
Never done it, or B, is there a flag?
I think since we're a advisory commission to the board and the board salutes the flag, I'm not sure we would need to have that.
Was interesting at the meeting yesterday, they saluted the flag. I had no idea where the flag was. I had to turn a circle to find it.
I would like to say maybe you called the order with the A and announcements and agenda changes. Announcements would typically be just, for example, a commissioner's not present and we have a quorum, we would proceed, but not general announcements. And it's where we would discuss agenda changes, I guess, if there were going to be any. Rest of it looks okay.
Okay, let me make sure. You run that by me again.
I would suggest that A is called to order, B is announcement, standard agenda changes. Announcement's important to the meeting.
Right. That gives us a chance.
Like three minute comments and, you know, this.
Agenda changes do, that gives us an item to make any changes there, okay. Great. Rule 6, public comments. This is something that is not addressed in the 1989 bylaws. And so, we do think this is important to have protocol for public comments. My thought, but one thing, one thing that is in here that I would recommend not be considered, it is, but it's a good point of discussion, is a person can't offer their name and their, I don't think we need to know their address, say where they're from generically, but I think that's a little, require a little too much information.
Well, we can't require their name.
And ultimately, you can't even require someone to tell them, say their name.
No, no, we encourage them to, but then we can't require...
Right, it's very helpful, but it's not, and it shouldn't be required.
I also think the three minutes ought to be fungible if warranted, so.
Flexibility with that?
Unless changed by the chair or by the commission or something.
Okay, yes. The other term, but shall step to the rostrum.
Well, you can fix that one up.
Shall approach, shall approach.
Shall speak from the front or nearby.
And it's not really a rostrum, it's a podium.
Podium, yeah.
That's way too...
These are general rules. We would have reasonable accommodations if a person was in a room.
Don't go there, not gonna, not gonna.
Okay, Rule 7, order of procedures for hearings. Again, not an issue or not a topic, that's covered by the 1989, the current bylaws. Going through seven, is there any questions?
If someone is disqualifying themselves, Joe, is it required to state why or something about why?
So, you don't have to state with specificity as to why. You can say that it's a general conflict of interest that you feel you need to refuse. You don't have to provide extensive details as to what that is.
Okay.
Ultimately, people, the way the code is written, even if it's a perceived conflict, but you feel like it's something you don't want to sit for because of that perceived conflict, you have the right to excuse yourself, make a general comment that you feel is a limited conflict.
Okay. Any comments on Rule 7? C is a little optimistic. Sometimes staff recommends denial.
Yes, it...
It really should read, staff's word is given with recommended, with recommendations.
Yes, that would be improved word.
Much better.
Now, if we are recommending approval, then conditions should come with that, but...
It's sort of a duplicate of K.
I think that that's the, again, another rule of decorum when the chair has carried that through tonight, which is after a public comment, a lot of times the staff report has been questioned and/or there's been distinctions made. So, that's a secondary chance for the staff to answer those questions with the rights in public comment.
Item D. There's a comment somewhere, I think it's actually Rule number eight, where you talked about you get something in three days of the, or more than three days ahead of the meeting. It can be entered into evidence and is that, is D supposed, is that what's being acknowledged there? I'm not sure what D is about.
No, D is if someone comes with a written, hey, I have photos here, I have this statement that I brought to the meeting and that, that's coming into the record at the meeting during public hearing.
Again, what these rules do is the documents which are received late is at the discretion of the commission. There's a number of reasons, and I know that we've had, we've had public hearings where it's happened, where people bring you large volumes of documents, which sometimes confuse the issue that's before the commission or that there is some thought on the part of that citizen that the commission is going to take the time to review that part and make a decision. And so, that's why it's generally left at the discretion of the chair and the commission as to whether you're going to consider that. That rule of three days is a general rule. If they bring small items that can be considered easily, pictures that can be, the commission and the chair can at their discretion enter those in, but at the same time, you have the right to turn those documents away, not make them part of the record, which encourages those who want to participate in the process, to follow the standards, which also gives you the benefit of the time to review those.
Documents show up three days ahead, if they're small enough to get emailed out, we have a chance to review it, but generally, it's not getting mailed out or anything after, after the package comes out a week, you know, on Monday. Okay, I guess we can have the policy here, it says we can't acknowledge once we're going to look at it, yes. Other comments?
Another item is O, under Rule 7. This is information that is provided on the agenda.
This will be printed on the agenda?
It is printed on.
It is printed on. Are F and G, I'm not sure we actually sort the audience that way.
Right, it's done in certain places, it doesn't need to be that way. Do already, when there's an applicant here, proponent for the project, you do, for my few meetings I've had, invite them to speak first. So, that is happening with a proponent of a project, but that could be reviewed.
I think that the problem here is that F states, public testimony is invited from persons seeking approval or a recommendation for approval. That could be anyone and not just the applicant. And so, so that should say that the applicant, if any, may speak first and then public testimony is invited from persons seeking approval or denial. Is that, yeah?
You guys clear?
Okay. Thank you. Let me make sure I got that right, that that would be applicants invited to come speak and then it's open up to everybody.
Yes.
Okay, Rule 8, documentary and physical evidence.
One, first, H, summation by the applicant may occur at the discretion of the chair and when granted should be limited to five minutes.
Yes, so, so one way this is handled is public comment is opened, this is an example. The proponent, does that speak, then you have those four, the project, the divided, and then the end, especially with very controversial projects when there's been a lot of comment received, then the applicant again has the chance to come up and address the comments that were made.
And we usually, we usually end up doing that, but...
Yeah, I don't think it's bad to codify it as an option for us, says it's at the discretion.
But that, at least, if things are said and then the planning commission wants one more chance to hear from the applicant and ask questions, hey, this person brought this really great point, can you explain this? Then that is, it's very effective when you have...
My issue is mostly with the five minutes because rebuttal and subrebuttal may occur at the discretion of the chair and when granted should be limited to five minutes. But, yeah, we could have a whole bunch of people that want to rebut and we could be here until, you know, two in the morning. Five minutes is too long.
Yes, okay.
Well, I'm not sure we ever do I.
No, I think I, I think I is overkill.
If you select one person and say they're going to provide the rebuttal.
I think we let the applicant speak and then that's it, everybody else has already spoken.
When we're getting, well, it does, but what we get, in the past, when we've had a case where we learned something and people are jumping up in the back with answers to the questions, we've reopened public comment.
Yes, but that's...
We always had that option.
Yeah, and that may be what you say is that if necessary, at the discretion of the chair, public comment can be reopened.
And remove I?
Yeah.
That, that'll eliminate Graham's issue of who you pick to do the rebuttal.
Yeah.
You can't let everyone do it, you know?
It'll be a long night. Mr. Stewart? That would do it. Rule 8.
I'm sorry, I'm still on...
You're still stepping up.
I'm still on seven.
Oh, okay, I can please?
We've already heard the staff comments and recommendations. We've already seen any environmental findings. So, why do we have K and L?
Well, K is staff rebuttal option.
Okay, but, yeah, staff rebuttal, okay, that's right. Then it should say staff rebuttal.
Well, staff's not really rebutting.
They're kind of, it's so they can, we can ask...
They're kind of, it's so they can, we can ask them questions that come up over.
Okay, but we already have the environmental findings, I mean, you're not going to be giving us environmental findings again, because we have that in the staff report.
And that, this part, that is in the resolution as well, it's a very, very important part of it, is those environmental findings are approved before the motion, you know, before you get, before the project. Why is that, eh?
If it's a case where we actually have to approve the CFC document, then that has to happen before you approve the I.
Okay, okay, so then, that's if there is... If it's required, okay.
Yes, very important step action.
Okay, I, I understand.
And staff has actually changed their recognition at that point in some of the times, so it's good to have comments and recommendations, right? Staff?
Can we move on to... Not A?
Go ahead.
Do we want to put anything about, often we're in a situation where we have discussion, and we ask, we're coming up with questions, and we want to ask the applicant, and so we reopen the public hearing, so that the applicant and members of the public can speak again about a specific topic that we set. Do we want to put a, that have chair's discretion? Would that call into the summation, but the applicant, that the chair's discretion? Well, but that's not how it works in practice here.
No.
I mean, it happens very often that we reopen the public hearing.
Once we start talking, you know?
If questions need to be asked of the applicant, or...
Yes.
Or members of the public.
Yeah.
Do we want to codify that somehow? So I think you can broaden the age.
Yeah. Ideally, if we address it here, so that doesn't have to happen as much.
Oh, believe me, it's going to happen.
Yeah, as much, I qualify it as much, but as much as we can build...
The issue Graham's raising is that, public testimony ends at J, so you're doing a whole public hearing, you know, A speaks, B speaks, C speaks, A speaks, okay, you're done. Now, we have our discussion, and in our discussion, an issue comes up where we'd like to ask a question of the applicant. The question is, do we have to reopen all the public hearing, all, yeah, public hearing to ask a question of the applicant? Okay, so I think that's the case, and usually that comes up, is we have a question, the applicant.
Sometimes, though, there are times when somebody in, who's just a member of, excuse me, of the public, has said something that sheds light on the issue, and we want to ask that particular person, who is not the applicant, to clarify. It has happened with, with cannabis, often, where there's somebody who has a better knowledge of, or had the most recent knowledge of practices, or legislation even.
So you're saying that we can ask a question of the applicant without reopening the public hearing?
Correct. If you're in, if you're in your deliberative process, where you brought it back to the commission, and you can see information from the applicant, the presenter, your staff, you can consider the facts that are presented to you, you can ask for documents that have been placed in the record, if you're able to find them. Essentially, at that point, you brought the deliberative process to yourself. Opening the public comment is a completely different animal than asking questions, as you consider.
So we could, without opening public comment, ask a question of a member of the public, who might have information germane to what we're discussing.
So there's three things I would say about that. Yes, the commission is allowed to ask questions, to seek information they have. Two, I think that it's important that the commission be absolutely certain that the information that they're receiving is...
Absolutely, yes.
So I would, I would state that a discussion of legislation or statute should never be had on that level. If there's a question as to what the legislation or statute says, that's a direction to staff who can view it, it's not, if it's not something, it would generally be an open discussion for the commission, the public. The third piece of that is, and I know we've had issues with it here, we don't want to do anything to encourage the shouting out to the commission, especially during that deliberative process. As you enter the deliberative process, the public comment is over, the public communication should be over, with those limited exceptions for you to consider your decision.
Yeah, I think the issue that happens is that, sometimes we ask a question of the applicant, and in their response, they provide not just information, but maybe opinion, or, and then that essentially riles up other members of the audience to want to respond to that.
That's a discussion, the chair to open that public comment, but opening the public comment is a different animal than having, what you don't, what you don't want to create is having a conversation with some public, but not other public. So if you have a specific question of a specific party, you can ask that question, but that's not inviting further opinion on their part, that's not inviting...
It's simply a answer to a question.
You're asking the question, you receive the answer, and that's it. If you're, if you're, if you feel that a speaker or something that has been brought up has caused that, that's really the chair's discretion, is to reopen the public comment if you're going to call it the opportunity. And those two should be distinct, those have to be...
Thank you.
Rule eight. So where does this come from?
The three days.
The three days.
Shouldn't it just be for the packet, that's being prepared and distributed?
That sounds like late arriving data that won't be in the packet, it'll show up on the day that's when we get here, and we're not going to read it.
Yeah, because don't, don't we have, I can't remember what the number of days is, but, but they're, they're supposed to have, when it's noticed, isn't there something that says when they're supposed to have supplied their comments? And that's before three days, before the meeting?
The first day in the notice is, I believe there's a second page that is the Tuesday before meeting, so.
Okay, so that would be, that's where the three days comes from.
Two days, one is for the packet, and one is for...
No, 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 in the notice itself, we send out two, the paper and the surrounding property owners, at the bottom, there's two dates, that if you wish to submit comments, they need to be received by such and such a date, and they may not be considered. And then there's another paragraph with another date, that is the Tuesday part of June, Thursday meeting, that we say to please have them in, so we have time to talk to them and such.
A lot of times, they don't, we don't give them till the date of the meeting?
So there's a number, there's a number of issues that a commission or a board has to consider with that. Number one, in general, those members of the public that bring you those documents, bring only enough of those documents for you to review, at which point, you're having a discussion with that member of the public while the other members of the public are sitting in their chairs, not understanding what you're looking at. And generally, if you're asking questions and, and essentially considering that document, especially with an applicant, if you've got large investments in the process, you may haven't had it yet, but you may have a huge issue with that document. So it is at the discretion of the commission under the current bylaws, and it is at the discretion of the third general law. But a number of things have to happen. Number one, it needs to be posted for the public, but they're going to be retrospectively reviewing that document, and in general, members of the public will appreciate that. So not only is it a rule of decorum to provide you the benefit of reviewing those documents, but it's also for the benefit of everybody sitting out here, too, to have had the opportunity to review it, for staff to make copies and maybe available here, all those sort of reasons. I think that it should be the exception where the commission accepts, especially large documents, and I think through public education, you can also make it known that it won't be accepted unless there's a large number of copies. Those were all things within the purview of the commission to make sure that happened, so that if you have somebody who shows up with five copies of their own copy, that could be in and of itself a reason to do the decline, et cetera.
Okay.
Well, I'd like to see, I kind of like to say something like what you just said.
That's really good.
A lot of reading, though. Well, just what he said is that if something shows up here like tonight, and there's not enough copies for the public, we should just reject it, or we could just reject it. And I think that's not a man policy. And...
Yeah, and it says that, but written materials and other documentary evidence may, but need not be considered by the commission. The secretary shall cause each piece of such evidence filed or received by the commission. That means we're accepting it into evidence, to be identified, blah, blah, and then if it's not submitted as evidence, then we reject it, then it's supposed to be returned to the person by the secretary.
Well, I think it ought to say that if it's presented at the meeting, it needs to show up in sufficient copies, whatever sufficient means.
Then the question was, what is sufficient copies on the agenda? We have eight copies.
How many do you normally bring?
There's mine right here, eight is nine.
How many copies do you normally make for the public?
Usually about five, unless it's a real conference.
So we should just say at minimum of fifteen copies.
Thank you.
Now, the bit about the secretary shall cause each piece of such evidence filed by the secretary to be identified in the minutes, that sounds like, first of all, you want to move to action at a minute, not the type we had before, if I'm not mistaken. But in the summary there, you're going to want to detail everything that was handed out after the packet went out, is that, is that the business now? Or, I'm sorry, I said handed out, received.
The minutes definitely want to reflect that, that something was received into the record, I don't know how to speed that, I would defer to Joe on that.
Yeah, so typically, I mean, it doesn't have to be extremely detailed, but because you do have the option, and you do have the standing rule that's in place, the secretary is going to have to make a note of what she's put in the record, and she'll probably tell you that each time that, whether you approve it orally, or you just consider it, I generally lean over to her and make a comment that it also needs to go online, needs to be made available to the public, and it becomes a part of your record. If, but if you're moving for denial, the minutes would reflect that you denied that document and documented and returned.
Denied the document, so when it goes online, do you amend the packet, or how does it show up online?
I'm not sure how they actually...
Are you, when he leans over and says, this needs to be put online?
Then I put it online.
Where online? In the, in the packet?
Where in the staff reports, and so forth, yeah.
I don't think I've ever noticed any of that. May have come up. Because it's after the fact, and it'll go back to...
It is, it is after the fact, and it's unusual for the public to receive it that way, and that's what the compliance is favoring.
Okay.
So should we, since this is a modern era, should, should we tell people that they need to bring a flash drive with their, with their data on it, so we can project it for the public? That's a lot more environmentally friendly than making fifteen copies.
This is true, it counts.
Definitely, you don't want to encourage this. You want to encourage the timely filing of the documents.
We're not putting a USB port in or putting...
There's no, there's no...
It would be nice for this to be the exception to the rule, not the rule.
So the rule does not apply to technical documents kept as public records by the county department, would that be?
You can't reject those?
Yeah, that's what I...
That would be like this, that was just put on our...
So you, you have two things that are created here. When the planning commission receives into evidence, it's like a court receiving something into evidence. So the court file would technically have two things, all of the documents would be in the file, the ultimate file, but the documents received into evidence would be a part of your record, which is different than just your file. So if a public records act request was made, we would include documents that the commission refused, even though the secretary has returned those documents for purposes of tonight's hearing, one copy, in general, will be retained, to show that this is the item that you declined to accept.
So there's a file folder somewhere that's got all these documents?
In general, your minutes would reflect what documents you took into evidence.
Or didn't.
Or didn't, and that would technically, there's an option separate from it.
So does it get posted online as, here's a document we didn't consider?
It would not generally be considered.
But it has to be stored somewhere for a public records act?
In the file.
So it would be stored in the file, so that if there was ever a challenge to the rejection of the document, it would be retained, but if you've received yours, especially your fifteen copies of it, only one will be retained in the record.
I don't think, to answer my question about this last sentence, where how this applies to records by any county department officer, employee, in a kind of accounting business, I don't just understand what that's saying.
Not sure it's necessary.
Well, it's like, we often, someone often pulls out cam code.
Yeah.
Zoning rules in the binder, and in theory, you could say, no, that's, we're not going to allow that evidence to be considered, right? This says that, this says that you can't do that.
Well, an example of that is, is the memorandum that we just got tonight from, from Kim, and, and that, that's something that, the way I read it, it is not applied to, to this document, we would have to keep this.
Well, I think, I think what this might be telling you is if somebody wants to argue zoning, which is caught by the law, essentially that would be like court taking judicial notice of, of something that is existing. I mean, you could read this line to, to state that. So essentially, the argument is constructive notice, the public has, has the ability to review these things.
Yeah.
Typically, those are things that are included in your staff report. If they've been omitted from your staff report, you have the discretion to bring in that information. So let's say that the staff has, has omitted something, and somebody has brought in a zoning app or a portion thereof, that the commission finds as helpful, you can, under your discretion that already exists.
Okay.
Also, just, it's semantics here, but I do want to clarify that the secretary of the planning commission is the planning director, and whose position is the clerk.
Okay. So you got a file in the, that's good.
I got a lot of files.
Cool. Okay, rule eight, are we down to rule eight? Be done today. Rule nine?
Rule nine.
You give his or her name and address if they choose, that's an option.
Except we don't ask for, most of the time, it's just name and city.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They usually volunteer that, we usually just ask them if they choose to.
Yeah. We just want to have name, or do we have? This is kind of weird, it's, it's like too much different. Somebody really wants to tell us they could tell us that.
The commission may grant additional time to any speaker, do we get into the, if you do it for one, you have to do it for all?
No, so under general rules of decorum, legislative for the planning commission... a planning commission such as yourself, there are generally discretion for you to grant a longer period of time. Some agendas will state that a standard is three minutes, but based on the number of speakers or the number of items that are spoken upon, the commission or the board may increase that based on their own judgment or discretion. You see that in a lot of agendas. So although you can have that, that issue is still within the discretion of the commission to increase a certain speaker's time based on specific facts that the commission finds that it should be increased. In general, you will see that where somebody appears in a representative capacity that has specific and specialized information, general public comment. If you stay away from exercising that discretion in general public comment, you also tend to stay away from that viewpoint that you've granted one person more time over another. And in fact, when you do have somebody with specialized information in their training, the public tends to understand the commission's grant will extend a period of time.
Okay. To the Congress, the last sentence is about limiting the number of persons with an address. I can imagine a secret hearing coming up. We might hear the same stuff over and over and over again. So how do you actually cut that off?
So this, again, a lot of times is handled in your agenda as it reads. Your very common statement in an agenda is that three persons, no more than three persons will speak on the same subject. And ultimately, what that means is discretion for the chair. So if they're coming up and expressing multiple different viewpoints, ultimately, the chair needs to allow them to continue. If you now have the sixth person that says, I agree with speaker number one, and here's why I agree with speaker number one, at that time, the chair has the discretion to say that, you know, I'm limiting comments and a novel do. And I know this commission understands that very well from when we began the first process of drafting the
Exactly.
marijuana cultivation ordinances and recommendations. When you have a crowd like tonight, in general, the planning commission will need to exercise this discretion in that format. When you have 400 people in the room and, you know, 98 of them want to come up and tell you you should follow state law and not enacting having ordinances, that's where you exercise your discretion and state anybody who has anything besides this to say into the podium, those who are seeking just to concur in this. For the need, and the chair can exercise discretion after the comment starts and say, this comment is a confirmation. If we have something proven to say, switch topics, otherwise...
Yeah, is it, I clearly remember, because I was chair at those first meetings. And I did, and I assumed, since I was not stopped, I asked that if people have the same thing to say, that they choose a representative.
So is all of that is in the discretion of the board when you admit it or condition? When you have a crowd of 400 people, 400, 200 people, and you have a high density society? Unfortunately, there's no check the boxes as to how the chairs can have to exercise their discretion. That's why it's left as discretion. So one of the things that I think is important to teach the public as a commission is that they're here for a specific reason, which is for you to consider their item. And if the sheer volume of public comment and repetitious public comments are remaining, you can actually get a deliberative process. It's not only solving the issue. And so that's, you know, the exercise of discretion is sometimes viewed poorly by the public. But in some instances, you're also benefiting the public and can actually achieve the deliberative process of the commission.
Rule 10.
And this rule, bring my pen.
B is ready.
Local votes.
We did it tonight, and I'd like to see it say the chair's called last. Boards, documents, I think we should do that.
Have to abstain, I believe.
Have to abstain, I believe. Majority vote required, defines majority vote required.
Wait, wait, yeah. A, commission shall act by voice vote on matters before any member. President is not voting, voting yes. If requested by any member of the commission, roll call votes should be taken. I think we should also state roll call votes shall be taken for resolutions recommending ordinances to the board supervisors.
So in general, anytime you're adopting a resolution or final document, you can have a roll call. But the chair can call for a roll call on anything up to and including or reaching, not to the consensus. It's the chair's, the chair wants a roll call, it's a time.
So that said, the commission shall act by voice vote on matters before. And what we seem to be having is having resolutions for everything. So I'm, first of all, I'm not sure I agree with doing resolutions for everything. But then what would we ever be doing, voice votes on, like, should we adjourn?
So the, your planning director and I have had conversations. Although sometimes a resolution has to go back and be amended, one of the things that sometimes you find is the record is somewhat unclear as to what a motion was. And when the chair sees an amended resolution, if you adopt a resolution that has been, generally, there's no ambiguity. If you adopt a resolution that has amended, the chair, when you're going to sign that document, will see it as an amended document when you sign it. Limiting those opportunities for there to be ambiguity or for staff who have created a finding, which is different than what the commission voted on. And the chair ultimately reviews this amended document and says, that's not my understanding of it. It can be brought back to the commission to review that amended resolution. So although it's not your practice in the past, for the record, it is in general a better process.
And a recent example was the grading ordinance. We're still not quite sure, you know, that was a motion that was amended and added to and so-called back. Thankfully, we have audio and video. But that, to have an actual, have it in a resolution format would have been...
But it's the same thing. We're going to amend a resolution instead of amending a motion. So we read the motion as you write it and then amend it. We're going to, and tonight, we didn't even read the resolution as you wrote it. We just read your recommended recommendation, which was to approve the resolution. So now, if we go in and amend things, it's an amendment of the motion or it's an amendment of the resolution. And I don't see where, what we've gained.
Well, so ultimately, when you're asked to approve a resolution, the resolution is what you're approving. If the resolution doesn't state in the way or in specificity that you and I get to state, then you, your motion would be to amend the resolution to read, and which we did tonight, which you did. And ultimately, that's a direction to staff to go back and create an amended resolution under the same number and present it to the chair as amended.
Yeah, so now the chair has to go view the tape and figure out what we said.
We should have it in the paper.
Well, the example she's talking about was a great example.
Yeah.
And I think we're in the same, I think it's another piece of paper that will get signed. I get that. But I think it's the exact same problem. A complex motion amending a three-page resolution.
So I think one of the benefits, and this is just your first meeting, is that as you get used to this, you can go through the resolution. And as you read the resolution, you're going to read the facts and the basis for which the resolution stands. And as you go through that resolution, you can add, delete, change language within the resolution, which gives staff something to follow along with you. So a lot of times, you'll go through a staff report and you're amending certain findings and numbers, which is essentially the same thing. But a resolution is, instead of being a staff report that has to be, that you're essentially adopting, this is a document for you to adopt with all that information.
So all the findings and conditions of approval will end up in the resolutions?
They will, they will essentially become part of the resolution.
No, they'll be in the resolution. Otherwise, it's exactly the same. We're referring back to a staff report with a list of findings.
Ultimately, they, the context of the staff report and recommendation of staff should be contained in your resolution. If it's not, and you feel like something's missing, you can amend it, add to it, delete, change. And that's where your amended resolution comes from. Or you can deny the resolution, have it brought back based on recommendations.
Okay, let's try it.
Okay, I think we're on...
Item E on the bottom of that page, motion to reconsider. I think we're, it's the third from last word on the page. Final, should probably say earlier. Majority on the earlier vote.
Well, so by fair and nature, a motion to reconsider is taking up a final vote and overturning that.
The earlier vote. But what this says is, which is right, is that the person who can request it to be taken up is someone who was in the majority on the earlier vote.
I've ever seen that happen. Have you?
It's happened.
It's happened? Okay.
Ultimately, I mean, it's rare. Somebody has a change of order right there.
I don't think we've ever seen it here. I have seen it at the board. I've never seen it here.
Well, excuse me, I have a question. What is the timely, before the next agenda item is brought up? I mean, before the meeting?
Before, ultimately, so in a technical sense, especially if it's a timed item, it needs to happen before you move on to the next agenda. Because if the public who was there for that item stands up and walks out, in general, you'd be pressured. Because those who would object to it have just left. So...
But for that time, that for time, for that time, did.
So even still, if you made a motion to reconsider on a highly contested item, and I've watched the general public who were here for that item, I would in general fight you to put it back on the agenda at a different time and bring it back because you've now lost your core.
But I mean, if they've already, if the public hearing was closed, all they're going to do is hear what the decision of the commission is. It's really not going to change whether they have input at that point. It's really...
Well, that's true. But the intent of the Brown Act is if you have eyes upon the board and make that decision. And whether, whether they have direct input for their public comment, there is an inherent pressure of constituents that they remember. There is case law that would support not bringing a motion to reconsider after the large majority of the population came to the item lap. And the reason being is boards would do that with a difficult attitude. The missions would do that with a difficult attitude.
We wouldn't do that.
I'm not saying you would. I'm saying throughout the state, there would be boards and missions that would do that.
Item F, absence from hearing.
So the sentence before, the last sentence, I think, is it's E. The prayer is further. In which case, notice of the reconsideration and the time and place thereof shall be given in the same manner as any notice of the reconsideration of the matter was originally given.
Yeah.
That's...
Yeah. I just delete the second reconsideration of the...
Has any notice was originally given?
Of any notice.
Yeah, been given in the same manner as any notice of the matter was originally given. At least that makes sense.
Makes more sense.
Yeah, more sense, totally worth it. Thank God. Absence from hearing. Any questions on this?
The thing you're supposed to sign, can we have a batch of the forms? After the commission? Yeah. So in this case, you missed a hearing and now you're back for the subsequent meeting or whatever.
Something was continued.
And it's continued. Now you're here, you want to vote. And you have to sign a thing that says, I've studied the record. Can we have the form here ready to go? We can just sign one of those and make it up each time.
Okay, rule 11, action. Resolutions. Here we go. Discussion on resolutions.
This is opposed to the other thing, which says everything will be done by voice vote. Just look at her, you put that reflex media here.
I think this just lays out the form of the resolution and it states that a resolution may be adopted conditionally or just what ultimately we've talked about tonight, pending preparation of proper form by the secretary and the concept of the formal action, which means as you've modified and changed and unleashed and those sort of things. And that's the, that's the inherent discretion of the commission to adopt it based on these factors, which means it's adopted, but the commission can speak on the final adopted document. They don't have a separate...
No.
So logistically, how does, I'm sorry.
We may be going to say the same thing. I'm not sure.
It's just the timing of when this final resolution gets signed. That's the record, right? That's the official document that starts. I mean, the public would need to potentially see that, appeals, determine whether an appeal needs to be made. I'm just, the timing of, if staff's going to take it back and wordsmith it, and then they got to get the chair to sign it.
Usually it takes a couple days.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately...
What's the chair's time?
You might want to restart the bus to Trinity Center.
Well, the other thing that you need to take into consideration is while you can, you can email, you can scan and email something to me to sign, and you can probably scan and email something to, you know, these guys. You can't scan when the E is chair. You can't scan...
Well, you can.
But he may or may not get it.
So we can, we can put it in the bylaws that if the chairman is unavailable for signature, vice chair has the ability to sign it.
And I think that that's probably a necessity.
When you're talking about just the relationship.
Yeah.
Or the duty of the board of directors. There is chair. And all those grant things.
My quest, actually, my question was, was different. So are we going to have, have resolutions on something like a variance? It says all matters, or, excuse me, all actions.
It does.
That's a little absurd.
Have resolutions this evening. This is true. So yes, it would be all actions as... Okay.
For small stuff like that, it would be less of an issue probably for having somebody, somebody, the chairman sign it. They're all, none of those were amended. So it would be at the end of the meeting, you sign it, you date them, you hand them over.
Yeah, that's true. That's true.
The ones that would get it would be marijuana ordinances. There could be a few amendments.
amendments involved. So essentially, we're gonna solve all matters via motions and resolutions ultimately, every single one.
Yep.
Is that a necessity? I, I personally, I think of staff time and the burden this creates of handling even more paperwork, you know? I appreciate the transparency and the completeness of this, but at the same time, the practicality matter of it concerns me.
It makes sense for some things, it doesn't seem to make sense for something like variance.
I understand what you're saying.
But you don't care.
I do care, I do. There's a few thoughts going through my head.
What are those?
First of all, the resolution's gonna be very short, very short.
Well, if it has been an all...
Well, it's gonna have all those findings, conditions of approval.
So it's not gonna be very short, it's gonna be exactly the same variance, it's gonna be this.
But at the same time, I would also think that some of those variances are probably the things that are more likely going to end up with county council and being reviewed and all, but that's, what, what happens when we get the first variance, it's been done five years in a row, then they get a new neighbor, and then we deny it because the neighbor doesn't like it, then we're gonna have all these variances going to be reviewed by courts and all kinds of fun stuff. So if everything is, if everything is right, then we, everything is right.
Well, presumably, you don't have to put all the findings in the staff report if you're putting it in the resolution.
Exactly.
You don't have to duplicate it.
Sure.
Well, let's try it. We hate it, we'll change our file.
I can say it's a long, it's a lot of, many, many files, and you're figuring things out, the record is sometimes not clear, especially multiple staff members who are working on it. Sometimes it's good to just have a document at the end of the file, figure out exactly what happened. And then I'll spend more or less time trying to figure out what happened.
Your staff, your staff reports you can attach to the resolution that's in the way, and there's a way to amend. The resolution basically says, states you've adopted this in its current format, whereas if it's amended, then those amendments can be applied in the resolution.
Is it common for deliberative bodies to do everything by resolution? It's not been my experience on the ones that I've worked with.
Well, in particular, our board doesn't do it.
So in actions that you take that are yours alone, where there's an appeal to the board, but it's not a recommendation to the board, in general, you would see a planning commission always have a resolution for that.
Interesting.
If, if you're making a recommendation to a board for adoption of an ordinance, that you're making a recommendation specifically that'll land use, sometimes you might forego a resolution for the purpose that you're not essentially enacting the legislation, you're making, you're making recommendations to the board, I mean, ultimate ordinance is coming out of that. That being said, that's really not a huge difference to give a staff report or your documents, create something with the board, and hold in their hand very specifically about what you're adopting.
The three jurisdictions I've worked for previously all used resolutions for most every item, a few exceptions here and there, but...
And now we see the pattern for the problem.
No, the past, the past year, yes, being important for you.
The last sentence under action, all other actions shall be taken by minute order.
Yeah.
What does that mean?
What does that mean?
Is that minute?
And it's minute.
It's really small, you have to scribble it in a little corner there.
Essentially, I think that's that your vote's gonna be contained in your minutes. So when you're dealing with a small item, you don't create a resolution for it, essentially your people are denial, and your vote count, your minutes.
How would that mean? Okay, so we probably should do that?
Just a few.
Make it sound like someone else.
Unless you don't want, unless you wanna see a resolution.
Honestly, I am not against change, but I need to understand the sense behind it.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, we might wanna reword, we'll give a shot at rewording that. Rule 12, minutes, nice and short.
Stand up, I guess.
Oh, my gosh.
Well, and you are, you are planning on switching to action minutes, not discussion minutes or whatever, what's the other term? Verbatim minutes, as we get for what?
Right, um, we are, the idea is to do a, definitely not verbatim, but a summary. If you go to the straight action, that does not leave a lot for the board supervisors really to, to, and this actually came up in a recent meeting of the board, because they are straight action. And, and so a summary, a bit of summary, what happened, a very brief summary.
Well, what, what I go back to the minutes for, these meetings is to see what was the gist of an argument for or against, or this kind of case. When it comes to the board, you have to go to their tapes, because there's nothing in their minutes.
Right, and we want, I would like to see, Ruth and I have discussed this quite a bit lately, actually, yeah, so that you can go back and get the gist of the, of the discussion. I think that's important to have.
Well, and they're also searchable.
Searchable.
Which the videos are much more difficult to search.
Not searchable. Right, I believe it was Supervisor Groves that couldn't find something in the minutes, or, actually, the minutes aren't finished yet, and he had to watch, I think he said two hours of the video before he got to the part he was looking for. So yes, that's going back to a bit of a summary to capture the discussion.
Okay, well, we'll try it.
Try it, and, yeah. Okay, disqualification. This comes back to recusing from an item, whether maybe a conflict of interest, this is very important language to have.
What if that last sentence on page five, staff report, page eight, does that mean?
That's probably simply here for the council.
Does that mean?
Which one?
The last sentence, rule 13, paragraph A.
By the rehearsal, the matter cannot be legally acted upon and decided by the commission without her participation.
So there are, ultimately, some bodies are so small, or require a certain number of votes, that a recusal means there's no action. In general, you can see that with the body that already has empty seats and business needs to be conducted. You would, if you were going to enter a position where you needed to do that, maybe explain the exemption to your recusal to you, because...
So that's the loophole in this one, so two of us are missing, and my house comes up, and I wanna vote on it?
An empty, an empty seat does not include some babies, that occasion or gone.
So if we had two people that were absent, and somebody that should be abstaining, you would still abstain, and you would...
You would still continue the item.
Prove that right of another...
Yes, I actually have that.
We can't have a meeting.
It's a rare, it's a rare occasion, it's a rare occasion where you would be exempted, and ultimately, it has to do with moving public business, where you're essentially waiting for an appointment for a governor or a special election. And so, very narrow, very unlikely situation, it does exist.
At least you guys quit, then I can do all...
And general, counsel does not advise you on recusal, and this would be one of those instances where you would not step into this role without counsel telling you, and probably making a record as to why you're stepping into this role.
And I have, flip the, the other option, where you did have a planning commission meeting, and actually, it called a special meeting for one item that had been continued several times, and we had one person we knew who was gonna be in Hawaii for that meeting, we knew long ahead of time, one of the commissioners, another we knew had to recuse, and we got to the meeting, special meeting called for this one item, and then another commissioner said, "Oh, by the way, I forgot, I, I have a connections project, I have to recuse myself." And, and it was, can't do anything, had to continue it, so that's different, very different case, but sharing that with you, because that has happened to me, and the applicant was not happy, rightly so. So disqualification, any questions? There's a very interesting sentence, which we now know, we know what it means. Also wanted to come B.
Has anyone on the commission ever testified before the board supervisors?
Uh huh.
As a private citizen?
Uh huh.
Or as, sorry, you're not representing this planning commission at that point.
I wasn't a planning issue.
Okay, but I, I mean, I haven't, this has never come up before, that you have to recuse yourself in advance if you're planning to say something to the board supervisors by the public presence.
On an item that comes to us.
Yeah, first, so that's, if you intend to appear before...
Or intend to appear.
Yeah, I mean, that's a kind of a challenging call to make.
Again, I think you guys will all have the conversation where we will talk about all of the facts, and recusal is based on a conflict, or the reception of a conflict, and ultimately, if your decision is a fair guideline, whether you choose to, to recuse or not is your, your own decision. As counsel, I don't represent individual members of the commission or the board, I represent the commission or the board as a whole. And if you've made an error in deciding to go forward rather than recusal, which is in general, the safe practice, if you have a question, then yeah, you can see, edit another fight, and ultimately, that's an issue for the commission.
'Cause this one says shall, right? So shall disqualify, that's pretty...
The code of conduct for a person who serves on a commission or a board, that are subject to these rules, anytime there's a conflict, you shall, and that conflict, when you read the body of law that consists that, if there are multiple things you need to take into consideration, you know, if you have questions about those, you can always go to the N P C's website, review those, but ultimately, if you wanna seek counsel, you seek it from the N P C, in the form of writing, and then it's really the only way to protect yourself from them.
Okay, and then C, which you probably already know, commissioner is disqualified, him or herself shall leave the hearing room during the commission's consideration of the matter. And fixing that typo, there's a second to that, in the paragraph. Okay, rule 14, communications inside inspection policy, sounds really technical, but it comes back to the importance of the public hearing process, and decisions made solely upon the record about the conduct of a planning commissioner when acting in their official capacity as a member of the planning commission. Just kinda outlining that, responsibilities, and then also disclosing what information has been received or communications have, have taken place to state that, coming into the item before there's any discussion from the staff presentation.
So does this include the plethora of emails we get, C C dot, are sent to us?
So as a planning commissioner, you serve a certain constituency, and it's anticipated that they're gonna contact you, that they're gonna provide you documents, and it's also anticipated that you're going to see those documents. What ultimately you do with it is where the distinction lies, you follow up on it and investigate on it, you know, those sort of things, that's getting outside the scope, but you can provide the emails, or oppositions, or people proponents, you can put all those in the record if you want, to be on the safe side. In general, they're all available under the public record act request.
I mean, it's pretty tough to have a conversation with someone that would have to basically publicly disclose all of their information, opinions, and evidence privately transmitted to you by that person, that's a, that's a pretty high bar.
The easy way to handle that is to over the E S for...
If there's an email.
But you meet somebody personally, then...
People often ask us to meet personally.
If they have a conversation with you, with just of what was discussed, and you don't need to lay out everything that was discussed in detail, it's, in this case...
But you can't just say, "I met with this person." You actually have to provide some sort of summary of what you're talking about. I think that's, to me, that's, 'cause I think in the past, people have admitted that they went to a site, or various people, the public had come, an applicant, or whatever, had interacted with us, most of us, that's happened too, but I think most of us just say, "We had an interaction," we don't summarize the content of that interaction, if that's what we're supposed to do, that's gonna make me not want to interact, it's just hard to do.
So you're, you're not a judicial body, which means you're not, you're not prevented from having conversations with constituents, because the intent of you serving as their representative is...
Rejected, you're from them.
It's adopted. That being said, it doesn't, doesn't permit you from needing to just disclose that there was a conversation, or that there was...
So, so just saying, "I met with this person, and we, we had a conversation about this, this issue, and that's adequate."
Yeah, and, and, you know...
And that, 'cause that's basically what I've said.
And essentially, we're, we're not talking about you walking down the street and...
And somebody stops you and says, "Hey, I don't like..."
Yeah, so every time somebody expresses a brief opinion to you, that's different than a side visit, or sitting down with an applicant, those sort of things that have more tangible substantive conversation. So just because somebody walks by you on the sidewalk and says, "Hey, deny that variance," that's probably...
You know, I have to give them...
You can see, you can see where the line was going, and ultimately, if they can see a look at it is, how much input did you receive, and did you, did you have discussion back with them? So if you received an email that was telling you something, that's different than an email chain where you're conversing.
No, I, I was, I went to the site of somebody who had a C U P coming before the board, and I went there to pick up something that he had for me, and he asked me if I'd like to see what his operation was, was like, and I said, "Sure," and so I announced it to the board when it came up, that I had visited the site, and that he took me into every building, and I saw, you know, everything that they were doing, but I did not go into detail, like, I did not tell what, I did tell the gentleman that, you know, just before, just because I'm looking at this, doesn't mean I'm going to vote for it, but, but I did not say that to the commission, and I did not detail any, you know, any of, I mean, we really didn't, I mean, you don't, you just are looking at stuff, you're not really having a conversation.
It would be harder to just...
Yeah.
Nobody's expecting... Nobody's expecting you to report your conversation.
Okay, so what I did was, was adequate?
Yes.
That's all I'm looking for. For the future.
Now, what he had for you was a large sum of money.
With your articles on the chair.
I have to share.
What a five ways.
Rule 15. Haven't I ever talked about this one before the meeting? It doesn't make a lot of sense. It doesn't really match yet, so. If we could just skip this one, I'll try to make sense of it when I go back. And then there, yeah.
So again, even, even when 15 is completed, suspension of the rules is also an extremely rare thing. It would be, it would be either public conduct and/or comment and/or interaction was of such a nature that the business is not able to be carried on by the board or the commission to the point where action had to be taken. Essentially suspending those rules for those items. Again, it's not something that in general would be in the discretion of the commission. It would be something that would be, in general, a closed conversation with counsel as we discuss whether or not you were going to suspend the rules.
So if I may come back with a rewrite of the county council on that language, it is needed. 16, amendment of rules. Mission may, from time to time, amend the rules in portions thereof by resolution. Rule 17, publication of rules. And that is just availability of the planning department with the clerk of the board supervisors to have available to the public should be requested. So there we go.
Excuse me, I have a couple of things to make. I actually would like to, and just a suggestion to the rest of the commission, I would like to retain some of the resolutions in the PC 8905. I am in favor of, for example, as does the commission, and I don't know if this is a necessity, but we, it has been the tradition that we meet the second and fourth Thursday of the month. And that's something else that I think is even of more importance to me personally is number seven. In order to fully evaluate the merits of proposals properly for the commission, that basically we shall receive this package the Friday before the meeting. That has been traditional and, you know, for example, I didn't receive this yesterday, until yesterday because of constraints with office, you know, postal office being open. I was here, I could not pick my mail up into the city, which was no big deal because, you know, the package was pretty small and sometimes substantial. And one or two days is not enough time to review it.
I received mine today.
My package got there, I came over, it had the package being copied. So, I mean, I do like to retain the Friday deadline. That would be.
And if I, if I may say, there has been at least one instance where we refused to consider an item because it was not brought to us in time.
This, by the way, just always shut around, fresh memory. Is this Friday before the cutoff for the packet? Is the Friday before, is that the cutoff for the packet?
That's when I send it out.
That's when you send them out, so what's?
But it wasn't sent out until Monday this time. And that's why we got it late.
Can you actually get something Friday and still include it in the packet? No. So you really need it.
Very, very seldom.
You need it like Wednesday.
Yes. And that's what we have in the notices, but they aren't followed.
Well, it's part of the educational process. So let's put in Wednesday, the previous, prior Wednesday.
I completely agree.
That, that can be very difficult. I do ask that we stay to the Friday. There are things that come in. Friday is to have the staff reports available on Friday. Internally, we'll set our deadlines on staff Friday for having the staff report available. I think that is doable, but there are, especially with two meetings. And I, I've heard, I've heard from the commission that the two meetings is tough. It's very difficult for staff. There's always an option to have a second meeting. But I do encourage that we consider, that it is considered, not we, you, just to have one meeting a month. It's, I cannot stress enough, I've seen that here, we're constantly turning around, you out of board meeting in there. It is really difficult for our small staff.
I'm sure that that's true, but if the public has a right to have their matters dealt with timely. And the planning commission should be able to have an agenda. That does not mean that we're here for five or six hours in order for the public to have their matters considered timely. And so that means that sometimes we're going to have to have two meetings.
Absolutely, and you could always have a special meeting. It's not saying we can't have, we're going to be having a second meeting this month. What I was saying, referring to is having it set in the bylaws that we have two meetings a month.
Okay.
That, special meetings can always be called if needed, but to have that. And it's easier to call a special meeting than to have, be canceling meetings because they're coming up.
Yeah, no, that makes sense for it not to be in the bylaws.
They can say the second, Thursday and the fourth when needed.
But if we could get back to the staff report, I know it's difficult, but I did not get my staff report. I had looked at it online, but you can't mark it up, you can't, you can't make notes, you can't do anything like that. And, and it did not arrive at the post office. I got it today. And, and when I went to pick it up, it was like one o'clock in the afternoon. It doesn't give me a lot of time. And that's because it didn't go out till Monday. And, and I'm not, you know, saying, Ruth, because I know there are extenuating circumstances. What I'm saying is every effort needs to be made for it to go out on Friday.
Absolutely, and I'm this, I, it's been a little bit of bumpy road the last couple of months.
I'm sure.
And, and no excuses, I totally, I agree, I want taken. And this one was on staff, on staff, not Ruth. And Ruth was looking at us going, where, where is the staff? Where's the staff? I want to get that very clear, that, yes, we were.
Oh, no, Ruth is.
And I do, I do apologize, I do apologize for that. That is, this will be accepted. And, yes, I'm taking it.
All that said, we're going to open for public comment. Anyone have anything to say about? Getting ready to go home?
I was, I can say this.
Justin Hawkins from H4. So I just wanted to go through a couple of notes I saw here in the packet. It'd be page four of the staff report, rule number three. Middle of the paragraph talks about shall appoint committees for the commission. We kind of talked about it a little bit. This sounds like the general plan idea we've had, along with class K. I can think of a couple of other things too. I know this is kind of dangerous territory. I know sometimes standing committees, you know, can make it worse. But I just think of, trying to think of ways where the public can help maybe move things along and sort through issues and not just rely on staff or even, you know. I think it'd be good to, there's lots of opportunity there. On, on rule number six for public comment, I don't know how it got changed. I didn't catch exactly the changes there, but I would just say the last sentence, the shall be limited to three minutes. We could just maybe make it to may be limited to three minutes. So on rule number eight, page six, talking about evidence being filed with the commission three days prior to the notice of the meeting. Is that still where you guys are at with three days? I only ask because this is like one of the biggest topics that came up at the commission meeting a lot, the other workshop yesterday, was the concept of a late hit, where evidence is dumped on the commission to last second, you know. And to kind of throw a wrench into the works, but at the same time, this is exactly what I was talking about, where local people are having to get experts to collect data to produce substantial evidence. And it's going to take us a long time. And I honestly think it'll be, we'll have to just wrap things up and push it on up to you guys if a meeting gets called before we're done. So I just, you know, fair warning, like, I would love to not have it be that way. It's called a late hit, but, I mean, due diligence, we've told you it's coming, so if things don't change. I think that the three days is, you know, I guess the way we'll have to make sure it's in there four days ahead of time, okay? And I would have to say number nine, the testimony section, this came up again yesterday at the workshop, where the only place people can offer oral testimony, especially regarding sequel comments, is at the actual meeting. And a lot of people don't like to write down comments, they can't mail them in or electronic to do it. A lot of people on Trinity are kind of old school and they'd like to just come in and orally give comments. So I think it's extremely important. And the idea of like limiting comment, I've seen it with the cannabis stuff early on and here at the boardroom with the supervisors. I gotta tell you, man, there's nothing more disenfranchising than having people come from all over so they can finally give their little bit of information. Usually people want to tell you something, I mean, they don't really want anything. Don't limit it. I just can't, I know it's time sensitive, but I'll tell you what, it actually makes people more mad when they hear that. And they're going to get more upset when they hear that their comments that they drove hours to get here are somehow going to be bundled and are going to be forced to be bundled in with some representative. It doesn't actually fly. And people will go around it anyway to just make a point of like trying to meet whatever you say to make their point. I think it's futile and is disenfranchising. Other than that, I think it's great job. Thanks for sticking with it, guys. I like having some rules to dig into. Great, thank you.
Mr. Brower.
John Brower from Junction City. We were told, I don't know, five years ago or so, I think by.
I was a Brower. It's got to be new information.
Well, one thing, so I agree with, with much of what you guys have already sorted through and everything that Mr. Hawkins said. One of the things that I'd like to comment on is rule number 11, action, or sorry, sorry. Under that, rule number 12, minutes. The official actions and decisions of the commission shall be entered in the minutes of the commission. And there's lots of talk about, oh, well, you can go back and review the video and that's kind of the de facto minutes. Especially, and then the conversation about verbatim minutes versus action minutes, especially with the ongoing cannabis stuff and early on in that era. The verbatim minutes also helped inform future agendas and things. And I know Leslie, I think the verbatim minutes are probably very helpful through that era. But the video part of it, I'm curious, I believe Darryl is still volunteering to do all this video stuff. He's not a county employee, it's not a county, it's not county property.
He's a highly paid.
Videos. So if we're relying on him to be the de facto verbatim minutes, it would be nice to pay him or reimburse him or acknowledge it in some way.
That's beyond the purview of the commission.
Oh, and talk to the board. That's about it. I think, I think most of this stuff mostly makes sense. And it's been, I don't know how many years, what, 30 years since it was most looked at? I think to allow for maximum public input in this very spread out county that only has one little newspaper, no real mass media, no radio station, to, to let people talk to you is really important, especially on controversial items. And even if it does take additional time, possibly even pushing a matter to a future meeting and continuing it, well, so be it. But you guys are entrusted with a lot of responsibility to represent your communities. And I think those hot meetings that are stacked with speakers are very important for the, for everyone here. And so I'd encourage you to go ahead and invest that extra time. That's about it, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So it does appear that she is working on working out arrangement that's more than what it is right now. My comments are kind of around what was just happening this evening. When action items are going on and that sort of thing, everybody was able to talk back and forth and we understood what was going on. But a lot of what was happening after that, when you're talking about your rulemaking, staff was not being careful about making sure that we're talking into microphones. And in fact, all of these microphones are not working equally. And across the board, you're not all making sure that you're talking through the microphone. And if we're trying to create a record of the meeting, which I believe is what the intent is for the future. When I started doing this, I was doing it to help the secretary basically to take her, her both minutes. But if, and I'm okay with turning this into a more formal environment, but I think it's going to be incumbent upon everybody to spend a little bit of time making sure that. And you can, if you're talking on the microphone, you can kind of hear whether or not the sound's in a room or not. And if you're standing here like this, I can, I can hear myself well. I can tell those micro, those speakers are not picking up my sound. So when I'm standing here like this, I can hear the speakers. So if you're not hearing something coming off of those speakers, get the microphone closer to your face so we can hear you. Because otherwise, either, either we're not going to have a good record or she's going to spend a lot more money with me trying to edit the audio and the video so that I can pick up sounds. My systems pick up spot pretty good, but when the volumes are like this, somebody's got to go in and actually, I have a son who makes a lot of money doing that kind of stuff in LA. I don't want to do that here. I just want to create a record that we can put on YouTube and get the, get a DVD and that kind of stuff and make it quick and easy to get it done. I'm happy with getting involved. And if in fact, we have an arrangement, we'll make sure that we have somebody here if I can't be. So we'll, you know, basically contract to provide a record. But I do need both sides to be paying attention to the fact that we're trying to create a record with the audio and the video, and it's not just video. If I can't hear what you're saying, there's not much point in it, so, thank you.
So Darryl, is the board or the CAO's office or somebody making sure the microphones are always working? Because constantly I'm hearing, oh, that microphone doesn't work talking to the other.
I've asked them several times to have the installer come up here and basically try to level out this system so that the microphones are all working the same. I don't know, I don't think that's happened. I'm not really happy. I know that these microphones got put on the staff side because that's the way they were before, but they need to be set up like the microphones are on here for you guys so that they can be moved around and moved close enough to somebody who might have soft voice or whatever. So that this stuff should be redone here like it is up there. And it could be done pretty easily, but it wasn't. And I know why it wasn't, it was because that's the way the old system was set up. But we got to, if we're trying to, if we're trying to create a video and audio record of the meeting, we need to make sure that our systems are all working. And like I say, I've asked the board clerks several times to see if they can't get somebody to come up and balance the system out because it's not. All these microphones are not working the same all the time. And they should be and they can't be, I think, so.
Maybe, maybe, maybe you could lobby.
I will.
Because if we're going to go to action minutes, it becomes a much bigger game for us. Thank you, Darryl. We'll close public comment and I don't think there's anything else, no other actions to be. Other than staff, you're going to go out and work on another draft of those and bring it back.
Yes, yeah, reportman, let's be continued. I'll be continued to the October, October 10th meeting.
Do you have a motion for that or?
I love that we continue item number eight to the October 10th meeting, at which time staff will bring back a revised set of bylaws.
I will second that. Any discussion, all vager, please say aye. All vager, please say aye.
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 Close. Item is continued.
Oh, I was going to say.
Good shouting of the microphone. Okay. Brings us to planning commissioner reports, which used to be matters from the commission. So does anyone have a report?
I do have a matter I want to bring up. I recently have begun employment with Trinity Valley Consulting Engineers and it is perceived, and it has been perceived by me that it might be a conflict of interest since the company reviews a lot of the discretion matters, matters we see before the commission. So in the interest of transparency, I have submitted a formal request to the FPPC this week to seek counsel from them. And so as soon as that, I receive that letter, I will gladly share with everyone so we can see what their recommendations are in terms of me recusing myself or not having to refuse myself once you're back. So I just want to bring that up.
Congratulations on your decision.
Be happy with it. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Oh, I don't know, maybe a question. I've been, I joked about it earlier, a little, when we're talking about being forthcoming with all of our meetings with people. I don't know, about 15 times a month I'm asked about K housing. And now that I've told people that Rick Tippett said we're going to do it with the housing element, now I'm hearing, when are we doing the housing element? Especially in Southern Trinity, our radio stations come from Pueblo County and you get to hear the, all the commercials right now about the review that they're doing of their housing element. And so I'm getting those questions and I, do I give them your cell phone number or?
Not my cellphone. Yes, our 2014, 2019 housing element expired on August 31st. There is, not only is it just important to have the housing element and to get that updated, but also there are funds available through Senate Bill Two funding that was earmarked for counties, but you have to have a housing element which is in compliance. And, and so there also is $160,000 that could be put towards affordable housing and addressing housing in the county that's available should we have our housing element updated and certified. So there's also incentive there. I am unaware of this connection with Class K housing to the housing element. And again, want to remind the commission that the direction does come from the board of supervisors on these matters. So Class K would come from the board of supervisors directing planning staff to create ordinance and start addressing the issue, which would come before you. And that, that's generally the matter of an advisory.
Yeah. The thing that we ran into before was when we talked about a Class K ordinance and we actually did some work and just to figure out what we're, then when it came back, Director Tippett at that time said that it should fall under the housing element, it shouldn't be its own ordinance, so.
It should be its own, our amendment to existing ordinance, yes. It does not, I, it could be a program, it could be touched upon in the housing element. The housing element is part of the general plan. It's broad, it's general. The actual how it's done on the ground, that's zoning code or building code or, and/or, probably. So the housing element would say a program, you know, such and such, the county will, you know, explore the feasibility of Class K housing and, and, and set goals for that. That's what the housing element would say.
Well, we recognize that the direction comes from the board of supervisors. We also can send recommendations to the board of supervisors that they consider Class K housing.
Not, typically no, not unless it's, not unless it's before you to make a recommendation on something as an advisory capacity, not a, not where policy and directions created the planning commission as advisory on something that has been directed to, been put before you by the board of supervisors.
That's not what we've been told in the past.
So we have to have all the people that have come to the planning commissioners and have been bugging us, now you got to go to supervisors.
Well, where it says under the jurisdiction of the planning commission and it says that on the agenda and then on bylaws.
There was a, there was a lot of issue there where, I don't, I've been hearing about this for some years now. And when it first started, and people were directed to bring it to the planning commission. And then, then we actually said, okay, we'll do something. And then once we did, then we were told that we were outlined, you can't do that, the board has to direct you to do that. So there's a lot of people that kind of, I get, I hear that like, hey, what's going on? What's going on? I don't know. So, yeah, and actually I've talked to supervisors, like, how do I answer that question? What's going on? And so, just give them your cell phone number.
Yeah. And, and I do realize there's been mixed messages in the past and, and, and that, I've been told with the cannabis and the ordinances that they were actually sent to you to work through and to, you know, yeah, to work out the language and work through these ordinances. And that is unusual circumstance. So when I mentioned coming back with a workshop on the role of the planning commissioner that I would like to have on the October 10th meeting, that is, is part of the reason where just concern getting the planning commission back in the role where it should be as advisory. I have plenty, director, that, that's my job, you know, and knowing the laws and the ordinance that governs the planning commission, it's an advisory role.
Okay. Sounds like you should direct folks to contact the board.
Yep.
So that we get the direction.
And I'd be happy to make sure I have, you know, more explanation back of when we have the workshop.
Okay. Anything else for Kim? I have one. This is a minor item, but I brought it up three times, so for the fourth time. Title 17 of the county code is missing a number of ordinances. If you read Title 17, the way it's published in municipal code online, we no longer have TPZ, we no longer have marijuana manufacturing, microbusiness or non-storefront, retail or self-transport for growers. Not to mention a whole bunch of typos and things, so.
Yeah.
Could you encourage whoever needs to be encouraged to update the published county ordinances to show what's actually?
Sure, I could, I could speak to that. And so, MuniCode.
Good evening.
You do identify yourself.
Yeah, you can hear me. MuniCode is updated two times a year. And when it was codified, when the zoning ordinance was codified, it did not capture a few things, a few things were missed. And the most recent amendment to the cultivation ordinance is missing TPZ, manufacturing, and there's one other thing, I can't remember off the top of my head, but they should be updated probably within the next two months.
Okay, good.
And the CAO's office is the one that coordinates with MuniCode and makes sure that that happens. If you notice anything else, please let us know because they asked us for the list recently.
I'll send you, I sent it to Rick in April. I'll forward it to you. And it wasn't in the mid-year update, so I don't know what's going on, but maybe in the next two months that'll catch up. That'd be great. Thank you, Leslie.
You're welcome.
I think that's all we have. Next item is planning directors' report.
Okay. The, just to mention again, the Sequel Workshop PowerPoint, Sequel Workshop that was yesterday, the link for the PowerPoint is online in the YouTube video.
It's up there.
It's up. And there's a link on the website as well with the PowerPoint, so, yeah, that is available. And then there will, as we are still under the current bylaws, there is a second meeting this month, 26. That is going to be an agenda for a public meeting, no action items, and that'll be in Hayfork. And the topic will be the cannabis program draft EIR, to hear from the public on their thoughts and comments regarding the draft EIR. There will be a follow-up, similar meeting with the board of supervisors. That will probably, we were thinking it would be October 1st, but we, after yesterday, felt that we needed a little more time between the meetings. So there'll be a similar meeting here and we reveal with the board of supervisors. On October 16th is our target date, but still that needs to be confirmed. I didn't want to put that out there and say that's going to be the date, but just to have a little bit more time between meetings to have time also to report what occurs at the planning commission meeting on the 26th. And with that, I, the meeting time is seven o'clock is, is a bit late. I was wondering if there'd be an entertaining of possibly moving the meeting up that Thursday evening on the 26th to possibly 5:30 or 6:00. Wanted to get a little feedback on that.
The thing is, the reason planning commission meetings are at seven is so that people that work can make the planning commission meetings. And if we move it up to 5:30 in Hayfork, people that are coming any distance might not be able to make it because they would not be able to get off work in time. And so I would not, I understand that it's an issue for you guys to get there at seven and then have, have to come back at the end of the meeting, but to be fair, I have to do it.
I'm a lot closer to my house. And, and just even a half an hour if that, you know, 6:30 meetings, that allows more folks to get time.
6:30 is better, but, but the meetings are, we've talked about making this meeting earlier in the past and the commission has said not to because of the, of that, that issue. And personally, I want people, I want people to make it there and be able to talk and address, say the things and have them count that were not counted at the last one. I mean, that's, that's only my opinion. I don't know what the rest of the commission feels like. Maybe, maybe it's fine with them.
Personally, don't like changing times on meetings because I will then show up at seven o'clock and go, oh, yeah, we changed the time. So that's just my own personal issue. Makes no difference to me.
Yeah. We need it.
Okay, so, hearing seven o'clock regular time.
And you said there's no action, so what is on the agenda? What will it be focused on?
Discussion, a discussion, a presentation, and then discussion, following presentation on the draft EIR and then opening up for public comments.
So discussion as in?
It's not going to be a public hearing. It will not be a public hearing. No action will be taken.
Okay, but this is the first time we've actually gotten to the EIR to go through and discuss, or is this the page by page, section by section? What are you imagining the discussion will look like?
The discussion, the focus will be on the, the top issues that were raised with the comments received from the draft EIR. So that will be, the presentation will be focused on discussing those issues that were identified as the controversial, the most mentioned types of comments and concerns. And that's where the, the presentation will be focused on those issues.
Just give them a presentation.
The presentation will be given by the consultant, the contractor. We do believe that that will be actually Pat, Patrick Angel and Gary Jacobs who presented yesterday at the Sequel Workshop. We do want to be both of them for both meetings, but that's why I'm not sure about the meeting of the board supervisors now that that's changed. So that, yeah, and then staff will be available as well. We don't have, that's the concept. We're still working out the details, but that is the concept at this point to provide that presentation.
Will the public be able to participate? I mean, you said, you just said a minute ago like it was not a public hearing, but will they be able to voice your comments, concerns, questions to the consultants? I mean, you know, from yesterday, from the, from the, it was, people wanted to engage directly with the cannabis issues and what is presented on the draft EIR. Will they be able to do that at these meetings?
As I stated yesterday, when a question was asked about, you know, can they ask you questions, will they get a reply asking staff? Again, that's, through the EIR process, there is, there is really, there'll be questions we can't answer, but there's not going to be too many that we really can provide the answer because we're in the middle of an EIR process. So I do, yeah, very, very carefully and clearly state there are things we are not going to be able to answer because we are in the middle of this between the draft EIR and a final EIR. The intent of this meeting is to get feedback on those, those issues, I'm calling them the top issues, the controversial issues. I believe there's about 15, there are so, yeah, six.
So there are six main issues that have surfaced as we've received public comments. So the idea is to air out those six main ones. And of course, people can provide comment regarding other issues that are a concern to them. And then we as staff will give you an idea regarding our general response to those main issues. Other issues that people raise, we may not have a response to those. But that way you can at least see some of what is likely to come your way and hopefully get a little bit of a jumpstart on what's going to be a really long process.
Okay, so, so we'll be discussing those six main issues. Well, we will be hearing those six main issues. And then public will be able to make comments on those six main issues and they will be able to make comments on other things. Will those comments matter? I mean, what's the point of them making comments if they make no difference?
You mean, are you asking, will they be part of the record?
Well, will they, I, I don't, I don't know what I'm asking. Will they be part of the record or will they not be part of the record? But somehow considered? I don't know.
Will be considered. It will be considered. The comment period is not only.
The comment period is still open.
It's closed. It's closed. It will not be, it's not be opened.
Okay, then.
So, but yes, these comments matter. We, we are essentially at a point where, you know, we have these issues identified, the six, not 15, six. And taking a step back to get more information, get more feedback from the community on these issues before moving forward and how we move forward. Need to, so to speak, get to the community, give you more information. Plus, we want to go above and beyond what is legally required to get that feedback on this document.
See, the thing is, if, if people don't feel like what they have to say is going to make any difference, then why are we even having it in Hayfork? I mean, why don't we just have it here? I mean, you know, people aren't going to be coming from all over to make comments if they feel like their comment is not going to make any difference.
The comment does make a difference. The comment does make a difference. It's just not part of the record.
Basically, it doesn't make any difference.
Although, so at this point, the public will be basically trying to engage with us to get us to change how we vote on said document rather than, here's your public comment that goes into the SEQUA document process. Now they're... These guys back here, they're coming over meeting and come say, this is the reason why you should deny or should vote no on this and tell them to redo it. And we can take that into consideration as planning commissioners. And then if we think that they make a good argument, we go back and start over from square one or whatever has to happen. Now it's on us. When does the SEQUA come to us for that determination? I mean, date, but where in the process does that happen? So you've got a meeting in Hayfork, maybe one with a board meeting with a Board of Supervisors somewhere.
In mid-October.
And then what?
Then we take a step back and consider the feedback that's been given and make a decision on how to move forward.
So you've got two information gathering meetings, one with us and one with the board. One in Hayfork, one we rule. And then primarily on those six items, but then we take whatever other input we get. And we digest it so that someday, if it comes back to us as actually here's the SEQUA document for discussion and action, we have that input. But in principle, we've never had a discussion here where we've given you input on what we think of that document. So you're still in the... You're still before that. You're still in the public gathering, information gathering. Although we're going to get the benefit of hearing in Hayfork some of the public input directly.
Maybe, if anybody bothers to come.
There'll be a lot of people there.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, I mean, they don't know what the... Where it's going to go from here. They could potentially decide to start over again. And that's certainly one of the alternatives. The other is to produce a final EIR and continue down that road. I mean, there's some big forks in the road as a result of these public workshops.
That's very true.
You know, no one is going to have heard the summary of these six topics from consultant before. I hope we get that information well enough in advance that we can...
Yes.
And I hope the public does too.
That we can have a fighting chance.
Because that might be enough incentive to get people to come.
Very good. And that is on the 26th at 7:00 p.m. in... Where in Hayfork?
It's not 7:00 a.m., 7:00 p.m.
So say that, 7:00 p.m. at the fairgrounds.
Yes, and we will... I can't recall the specific building, but we will even have a specific building we have reserved.
It's going to be at the dining hall, isn't it?
It's going to be at the dining hall. That's it, yes. And so we'll make sure to put that on. And, yeah, and, yes. We have a fire prepared. We kind of held off on it. We need to... Wanted to get the time confirmed with you tonight on what your preference was. And we have that. So that will be going out either tomorrow or on Monday. So, yes, that's all I have.
Have you made any arrangements for sound system for the dining hall?
She's taking the note. All right, Director. Anything else for us?
No, nothing else.
Thank you very much. With that, we adjourn.